All right, good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, September 6th, 2022, and we are gathered here at the Athens-Clark County City Hall for our monthly business meeting. And as always, there are going to be several opportunities for resident input. There will be an opportunity regarding the consent agenda, an opportunity regarding old and new business, an opportunity regarding each of the planning and zoning items that are being heard for the first time, and then finally, there will be an opportunity at the conclusion of the meeting for any item not on tonight's agenda. Generally, rules of public input suggest that you have three minutes to speak. There's a light in front of Clerk Spratlin, and it will turn green when your time is beginning, yellow when you have 30 seconds remaining, and red when your three minutes has expired. The only exception to this is that an individual may sign up as the primary proponent or opponent to a planning and zoning item, and I believe we have one of those longer 10-minute opportunities that is being taken advantage of tonight. So to begin business, I would like to ask Clerk Spratlin to call the roll, please.
Devin Porter, Parker, Link.
Here.
Wright.
Present.
Denson.
Cool.
Here.
Edwards.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Thornton.
Here.
And we have a poll.
All right, and please note Commissioner Davenport is here as well. All right, first item of business for Commissioner approval is approval of minutes of meetings of Tuesday, August 2nd, Tuesday, August 16th, and the August non-voting meetings. I hear a motion to approve those agendas.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Thornton and a second from Commissioner Myers. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries, those minutes are approved. Madam Clerk, is there any written communication tonight?
No.
All right, no written communication this evening. All right, again, this first opportunity for resident input is on the consent agenda, and the consent agenda is comprised of items 1 through 11. So if anybody in the audience would like to speak to any of those items, 1 through 11, now is that time. Agendas are available on the table in the hallway. All right, is there an ordinance? Attorney Drake?
There are four ordinances for items 1 through 4. I'll read those now in succession. Agenda item number 1, in ordinance to amend the Code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia with respect to tax allocation, district advisory committees, and for other purposes. Agenda item number 2, in ordinance to amend the Code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia with respect to flood protection and for other purposes. Agenda item number 3, in ordinance to amend the Code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia with respect to the maintenance and reporting of records for fire and life safety systems in chapter 3-7 to provide for an effective date and for other purposes. Agenda item number 4, in ordinance to amend the FY 2023 Annual Operating Capital Budget for Athens-Clark County, Georgia so as to provide grant funding and awarding from the Federal Justice Assistance Grant Program for law enforcement equipment and for other purposes.
Thank you for that, Attorney Drake. Would any commissioner like to remove one of these items for discussion, 1 through 11? All right, hearing none, I entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Thornton for approval of the consent agenda and a second from Commissioner Myers. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries. Now we're going to move forward to old and new business. Rules of public input are the same, and old and new business items are 12 through 21, and then new business, 22 through 25. So anyone who would like to speak to any of those items, 12 through 25, now is that time. You may approach the podium, please just let us know your name and the item to which you're addressing, and then you'll have your three minutes.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Commission. My name is John Gurley. I live out off Cleveland Road in Huntington Park, South Division. I want to speak on item 21. I've just got a big question mark as to why it's felt the need to reduce the size of a quorum. We just doubled everybody's pay, and now you're asking for time off, is what that looks like. And I just feel like the requirement to reduce it is not wise, and also, I'm not convinced, and I don't, I'm not unconvinced, but I'm researching, does the commission have the legal authority to be able to change it by just a vote and not go to the electorate? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gurley.
Okay.
All right, again, any item of old or new business, now is that time, items 12 through 25. Good evening.
Hi, my name's Lynn Ganas, and I'm going to be speaking on number 15. I represent 3,000 UGA families. We're a diverse group of backgrounds with a common goal of enhancing safety and security on and off campus. We care about UGA in Athens, and with an enhancing safety and security is the influx of homeless into Athens and the correlation of gangs and drug activity that hide and operate within this vulnerable community. UGA students saw this week two homeless men on the stoops of their apartment smoking crack with a machete between the two of them. Can't wait eight months for Cloudburst to do a strategic plan. Doors to Athens are wide open now. All money proposed for homelessness services should be spent on data to find out why so many are coming here. Triage Athens-only homeless for behavioral health and substance abuse disorders, majority of Athens homeless persons, and the path to successful housing. Athens homeless deserve this, and it serves them better than a pretty $313,000 toilet. Many of our working group members are not Athens residents, we still influence. UGA is your largest employer, our students here four to five years or more. Our students can begin choosing other universities, many already have. Our UGA campus community voices count, just as much as every homeless person who comes to Athens seeking services and automatically becomes an Athens resident. Don't want to be Austin, Texas, where a homeless person dumped in the city by another county's law enforcement raped and murdered a University of Texas student. Don't want to see another night like last week, students barricaded into Athens downtown businesses, running for their life out of back doors, fleeing the unknown with a shooter on the downtown streets, and a suspicious car related to this incident jam-packed with high-powered weapons, drugs, money, and ammunition. Past fall, dead body discovered by UGA students in green spaces behind off-campus housing. Homeless couple frequently walk locked apartments parking lot, carrying a machete and erratic behavior. Recent spike in ODs in the homeless community, all relative to recent Athens arrest of fentanyl possession that could kill 2,000 people. Reports of new drug trank coming into the homeless community that can't be detected by fentanyl drug test strips. Increased labor hours by our law enforcement. Many reports of aggressive behavior downtown by the homeless, many reported to the mayor. Over 100 gang arrests since fall disproportionate for this-sized town. Homeless consultants verify that gangs, drugs, guns, trafficking operate in an increased capacity when the homeless vulnerable community. People live in fear, they're at risk, they're experiencing trauma. UGA and Athens city leaders, please support the programs: Safe Zone, Block-by-Block Ambassadors, Blue Lights on and Off Campus, Robust Safe Ride Program, and multi-housing crime accreditation with attention to environmental security design. The time to act is now, and we hold you accountable.
Thank you, Ms. Ganas. Anyone else here to speak to old or new business? I appreciate folks being here. If you just listen, I want to be able to hear with my old ears. Thank you.
Hello, I'm also here to speak on behalf of our 3,000 parents for the UGA Parents Safety and Security Group. I'm here to speak as a voice on behalf of our parents for safety and security. Safety is a common thread we all have as parents, regardless of race, politics, or gender. I come in front of this board to plead to you to hear our concerns and ask you to put programs into place that help the safety and quality of life for the entire Athens community. While most everyone in our group has expressed compassion for the growing homeless population, many believe spikes of untreated mental health and addiction disorders awfully deeply rooted within this population must be addressed immediately. With the ever-present criminal activity encountered, it becomes increasingly difficult to distinguish between the many avenues of crime. Whether it is a homeless person, high on drugs, encroaching your personal space, screaming obscenities, or carrying machetes, a scary night of gang-related gunfire, a series of break-ins, including gunfire, a frightening police barricade with helicopters overhead, a student accosted in a parking garage or raped in the bushes, a dead body found in your backyard, homeless people smoking crack on your porch where the police response is simply to suggest your students purchase a gun, human feces spread on the sidewalks, public indecency, a sex trafficker, or a missing student, this has become a part of our students' daily lives. Sadly, I can say within one year, my own child or someone I know has encountered each and every one of these crimes mentioned, and some more than once. There are so many similar stories. These types of activities have become an expected part of living in Athens. I am a 1987 UGA alumni, and the changes I have witnessed are extremely alarming. If resources are limited, then why are we continuing to allow an influx of homeless that diminish services we are able to provide for our own? Why must helping homeless mean leaving others feeling vulnerable while also permitting the town to be full of trash and unacceptable living standards? Why should our young adults live in fear at every turn? Where is your accountability to them? I would imagine even the homeless are victims to this crime. Now I leave you with a list of anonymous comments from our parents for our safety group. Please work in conjunction with the university to add, to address our concerns. Please do not let it take one of our students to lose their lives before you hear us. We are counting on you, and it's out of control. And as parents, we literally cannot sleep at night, and all of those happened this year. And I could go on about every single one of those has happened to these kids this year. And you should see the years and the two years before that. It's just incredibly scary, and we really would appreciate it if you guys could do something. There are so many parents that cannot speak that are not here tonight. I took one event and wrote down all the comments that they said anonymously. I'd like for these to spread around. If you guys at some point can read them, it would be great.
Attorney, you'll get that.
Thank you, and please work with the university, please, because I know it's y'all coming together.
Thank you, I just need your name for the record.
Yes, Cindy Furman.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you for your time and whatever you can do to help us. Thank you.
All right, other sewer here to speak to old or new business, items 12 through 25.
David Ellison, here on behalf, to speak on item number 12. Here on behalf of the applicant, Mill Creek Residential, and Mike Kennedy, we're asking that this application be withdrawn. We'd like an opportunity to reassess the project and the rezone. We do anticipate that we will resubmit later on, once we get additional comment, but just like to state that we'd like to withdraw this application and happy to answer any questions when it comes up on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ellison, I appreciate it. Anyone else here like to speak to old or new business, 12 through 25 on your agenda? Evening.
Excuse me?
Good evening.
Oh, good evening. My name is Patricia Taylor, and I'm representing Woodridge Subdivision, and we're here on the project on Olympic Drive, and we disapprove of that possibly being rezoned at this time. One reason is we already have enough traffic flowing in that area from Indian Hill and Olympic Drive, and if you put the houses and condos in that area, we looking at our taxes going up, we don't need that. And we would like to have, if they're going to put anything, we would like to have affordable houses for that area. And it was, the planning commission did not approve it twice, and we would like for you to take in consideration of what they were saying and the things that they brought up in their meetings.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. All right, again, anyone else who would like to speak to old or new business, those are items 12 through 25. Now is that time.
Thank you, and if I can see this, I'll read it. I'm here to speak on, I'm Joan Roden, here to speak on item number 12, Inclusionary Zoning Working Group, and how they come to the zoning recommendations. If I am correct, Commissioner of District 2, Mariah Parker, is on the Government Operations Committee, and she is also on the Inclusionary Zoning Group. The Olympic Drive development, East Athens is against it, and like Nottingham on the West, that's going to be brought forward even though the people are against it. And again, I'm here to speak for people, thousands of people in Athens, who are not able to read and study and keep up with the whack-a-mole government that takes place in any, in any government, but especially here in Athens-Clark County. The county attorney makes a concern known regarding improper behavior from the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners. I don't know where that's gone. I don't know what's going on with that, and I've looked to see if I could find out anything, but it's hanging out there like these other things. Newsflash, after the county attorney makes, notes concerns about improper behavior from the Planning Commission and Board of Commissioners, Mariah Parker goes public with a statement to resign. It's in the newspaper. Most people, if they read, they know that there is a resignation notation out there in the ethosphere. Then Mariah Parker, District 2 Commissioner, publishes her letter of resignation as of August 31st, 2022. Papers print that Melissa Link will run for Mariah's District 2 seat in November 2022. News that there is question about who can run, when, and in what district based on state and county codes comes to light, and so now, not only are the people that are informed confused, the Board of Elections is confused, the Board of Commissions is confused, the what other board is confused, everybody's confused. All of a sudden, what seemed like a perfect plan has stalled in the very codes and laws that often serve the agenda of this commission and mayor. Who's on first? Who is holding Mariah Parker's resignation papers hostage? Is it the commission? Is it the mayor? Is it Commissioner Parker? As of August 31st, 2022, she said that she was resigning, but the governor does not have the resignation letter from Commissioner Parker, which confirms and then makes, makes sure that she has.
Thank you, Ms. Roden.
That she has.
Appreciate you coming tonight.
Board of Elections does not have it clear, state legislature does not, who is holding Mariah Parker's resignation hostage papers.
All right, would anyone else like to speak to 12 through 25? Those are items of old and new business.
Okay, that's all right. Well, I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I am, because I'm going to address the elephant in the room here, I guess. I'm just going to quote to you, oh, here's my card, I think you know who I am.
Just give us your name for the record, let us know to which item you're speaking.
Susan Monteverdi, the item about reducing the commission size after a pay raise kind of thing. And I just want to address the fact that we are missing a commissioner tonight, which goes towards your wanting to reduce the quorum or whatever. And I want to read to you something that talks about vacancies of seats, and this is from the State Bulletin that's produced by the state of Georgia. Vacancies may occur as a result of, among other circumstances, a commissioner resigning from office, which we know has happened but hasn't happened, dying in office, ceasing to be a resident of the state, county, or district to which he or she was elected, ceasing to be a resident of the state or the county which he is not part of. I believe it's important to understand that Commissioner Parker has moved. I don't think she's a resident here anymore. Ceasing to carry out duties of the office or being evicted are felony, blah, blah, blah. Resignations are made to the governor. Oftentimes, the procedure to fill a vacancy or the county commission is established in local legislation, but in our case, it isn't. When the local act does not provide such procedure and an unexpired term exceeds six months, which is the case here, the probate judge must call a special election. And that's what should happen in this case. So I'm asking our attorney, Attorney Drake, to get with the probate judge and to see what the next step should be in this case, and to also determine what is Commissioner Parker's address, her current established address. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Susan. Anyone else like to speak to items of old or new business? Those are 12 through 25. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Shanice Allen. I live at 130 Meredith Ridge Road, and of course, I'm speaking about number 12, the Olympic Drive project. And I know that I've sent several emails the past week related to Olympic Drive, and thank you, Commissioner Wright and Commissioner Davenport, for your response to the emails. I am terribly disappointed in the leadership that sits before me behind the rails. We have a commissioner that reported to every local media outlet and Twitter that she resigned effective the 31st of August. She shouted it from the rooftops, only to find out that Commissioner Link wrote on her Facebook page asking of Commissioner Parker to postpone her resignation so that she could qualify to run for the District 2 seat. Does it matter that Parker has abandoned her district? She no longer lives in the district, nor does she live in Athens. Inner East Athens neighbors sent a letter to the city attorney on August 24th, 25th, excuse me, asking for censoring of Commissioner Parker for inappropriate behavior related to the Olympic Drive project. Now to only find out that the commission is conspiring to hold our District 2 seat hostage. We have neighbors that are hurting, on the brink of homeless, neighbors working three to four jobs to make ends meet, and still being told they have nowhere to move. We are in a housing crisis that has been on the horizon for over a decade. Soon, we will no longer be able to call Athens home, it will be a developer's community for high-dollar rentals. Today, we are at Anpass. We have a commissioner who has moved to Atlanta for a flashy, high-dollar, high-platform career, who quit her job last week, submitted a letter to the mayor and commissioners, and now is holding the seat hostage and won't send a letter to Governor Kemp because she is holding the seat for her commissioner friend. What kind of games are you all playing? Musical chairs? This is real life, and we only get one shot at it. We would like for Mariah Parker to verify her address, that it is indeed in Atlanta. We know that her lease was not renewed by the landlord and her, at her last stated address. The house sits vacant today. Our commissioner has declared she quit her job, leaving her constituents in limbo and not giving a care in the world. I get it, Commissioner Parker, I do. You're tired, exhausted, and overwhelmed. There is no excuse for you holding up progress and hold our seat, district seat, to play childish games.
Thank you, Dr. Allen.
We continue to ask for censoring of Mariah Parker, and we as constituents of Inner East Athens neighbors accept Mariah Parker's resignation effective August 31st, 2022.
If anyone else would like to speak, hold please. If anyone else would like to speak to either old or new business, those are items 12 through 25. Now is that time.
Hello. My name is Erin Stacer. I'll put that up there. I'm speaking to item 14. I'm in support of this item, and I'm also in support of the Option 1 addendum to it, in which the language makes all $800,000 available to tenant assistance. And as I understand it, this should be in addition to the funding allocated for eviction prevention services provided by Athenean First. That's good, because people right now, as you just heard, they need as much assistance as possible. Many of you know about the evictions that are happening at Lexington Heights and Hidden Pines, where an out-of-state investment firm called Prosperity Capital Partners bought up several apartment complexes, denied lease renewals to families on Section 8 housing vouchers, and jacked up the rent to nearly double what residents had been paying. This is all part of a horrific trend across the United States, and Athens has some of the least affordable housing in the country. Where are these families supposed to go? To Prosperity Capital Partners and the like. Your profit is our neighbors on the street. Families being made to move out of town. Your prosperity is our community detriment. And I'm asking our commissioners and our mayor to use your positions to speak with state representatives about changing the state-level laws that unequally grant power to landlords, developers, and so-called investment groups. It is policy that prevents us from providing essential human rights, like housing and healthcare. It is policy that makes these human rights into commodities to be sold to those who can afford it. We need policy that puts human quality of life first. Please be relentless in your pursuit of this. And the other side of housing affordability, of course, this crisis is also about wages. People cannot afford housing because they're being paid far less than the $25 an hour minimum that many studies have found to be the actual wage needed to cover basic living necessities to the average US resident. And so in addition to asking for this body's advocacy in housing policy, I am asking that you please do everything you can to support workers here in Athens. We have some great workforce development programs intended to train people into jobs, and I hope we can grow those programs. We also need to support the creation of a worker's center. As a reminder, a worker's center is different than workforce development programs, because the center will be a place where people can go if they're concerned about their safety at work, working conditions, things like benefits. I hope that you guys will heed my words. Thank you so much.
All right, anyone else who would like to speak to old or new business, those are
Hi, I'm Ellen Jones, 195 Xavier Drive, and I'm speaking on item 16, the transit request. I live off Timothy Road, surprise, the one place within the loop that once you get out of my neighborhood, it's over a mile in either direction to get to the nearest bus stop, and the one to the south is inaccessible since there's no way to safely get to it but by car. From the back of my neighborhood, it's over two miles, and we're inside the loop. Even then, the bus only comes once an hour. There has been no data released showing fare-free transit in Athens has significantly increased ridership. If it's a choice between free or more routes and more frequency, I vote for the latter. Some people don't have the option of driving even along Timothy. Many risk their lives on bike, foot, just to get to work and back. Some even have to do so at night. Without nearby, frequent, and safe, accessible transit, for those of us who are not fond of air pollution and acknowledge the climate crisis, what are we to do? Just buy electric cars as if they're the end-all, be-all, for-all... Just buy electric cars as if they're the end-all, be-all, for-all solution? They're not. There's a popular saying with the Athenians east of the Middle Okony River. The bike is the answer. I agree, but for those of us on the west side, to use bikes to do our errands within Clark County instead of the Okony Connector or to get to work in town, we need a way to safely traverse the Middle Okony River. There are only three in-town roads besides the loop that do this: Mitchell Bridge, the Atlanta Highway, and Macon Highway, all of which are bike pedestrian hazardous. For me, the safest current solution is to making this crossing is to ride up Timothy on the Sharrow, up Epps Bridge, and load my bike on the hourly bus on Epps Bridge Road near Abbey West Apartments. This is so inconvenient, I imagine few people do it. We just either suck it up and pedal or drive. And by the way, a big biking trend these days is fat tire e-bikes. These have four-inch-wide tires and provide a more comfortable ride, but many of our buses can't even accommodate these. To minimize my carbon footprint and to get more exercise, now that it's getting cooler, I'm trying to make most of my in-town trips via bike. I load my bike onto the bus when I can, but I'm not going to wait 30 minutes or more to do so. I biked here tonight. I'll be biking home after the meeting. Wish me luck.
Thank you, Allen. Good luck. Would anyone else like to speak to old or new business? Again, those are items 12 through 25. All right, seeing none, we'll begin commission deliberation with item number 12, and we have a request to allow withdrawal of this item. Do I hear a motion for said request?
Yes, I make a motion to accept the applicant's withdrawal.
I second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Wright to accept a withdrawal, a second from Commissioner Thornton. Any further comments, Commissioner Wright?
Not ready to vote.
Anything else, Commissioner Thornton?
No, I think this is a good, a good move.
Any further discussion from the body? Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries. All right, similarly with item 13, we have a request for withdrawal. Commissioner, would you like to make a?
Yes, yes. The applicant has requested to withdraw this item as well. This is the proposed fraternity house on Hancock. And I'll propose that we withdraw.
Sorry, I would like to second.
All right, there's a request for withdrawal accepted from Commissioner Link, seconded from Commissioner Wright. Any further notes, Commissioner Link? Anything else, Commissioner Wright? Anything else from the body? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries. Item number 14 is the supplemental CDBGCV allocation to funding recommendations. Commissioner Denson, you were interested in making a motion, so I'd hear that now.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion for us to accept recommendations A, B, C, and D.
Second.
Any further notes, Commissioner Denson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I think that most people in the community are aware of a problem that's been happening for some years anyways, but has definitely become more prominent recently with investment companies buying up large swaths of our workforce housing and making it unaffordable for the residents who live there. As was mentioned earlier at the podium, Prosperity Capital Partners purchasing hundreds of duplexes and apartments here in Athens Clark County and basically overnight, almost doubling the rent while also avoiding any kind of federal housing subsidies, including Section 8 and also the Veterans Affairs housing vouchers, is putting a lot of people either on the street or out of the county because they cannot afford to live here or they can't find a place that takes those housing vouchers. We need to do a lot more. We do need to work with our state legislature to ensure that we have a housing income discrimination ban so that these landlords cannot refuse Veterans Affairs housing vouchers and Section 8 housing vouchers. But that work has to be done on the state level. And so while we're very limited what we can do here, I think a creative thing we can do, and I greatly appreciate the work of Assistant Manager Jones and the HCD staff for working so diligently with these providers, to find five of the six providers saying that they are willing to prioritize giving funding to moving expenses for those residents being forced out into place and displaced because of these actions. And so I am glad that we can do something, although we have a lot more to do. And I urge this body and this government to continue to be creative in finding ways for us to support those low-income residents and to ensure that we're prioritizing their needs over the prosperity that could be raised from outside investment firms.
Anything further, Commissioner Hul?
Yeah, just a couple of things. First, I want to thank Commissioner Denson for his leadership on driving this forward. And I know a lot of folks on staff have worked really hard to try to adjust in sending out that addendum with a lot of the subrecipients responding and being willing to adjust as well. So, you know, it's easy to skip over how big of a deal that is, but there's been a lot of movement to try to make this work, and I'm excited that we're able to do something here. But really want to underscore the limits of what we are able to do and the reality that that's not enough to address the scale of the problem that we're facing with outside investors buying up property in this community. I do hope that this body can have this on our agenda if and when, hopefully when we meet with the state delegation before their upcoming legislative session about some changes in state law that might, could be made to change things regarding housing and tenants' rights moving forward. I'm specifically interested in something related to rent control, for example, so that buyers can't just double the rent overnight on people. But we're unable to do anything about that here, and so I'm excited that we're doing what we can do, which is provide an avenue for people who are being displaced to hopefully ease their burden when they seek to move, which is especially difficult to do these days. I did want to check with the manager. I know there's been some kind of Scrivener's errors from the way Adobe, you know, copy-pasted some of the attachments and things. Can we expect an updated agenda item that can then, maybe this is also a question for the clerk, be posted for the public's benefit after the fact that will reflect the accurate responses to the addendum and things like that?
Yes. So some of those Scrivener's errors included, I think a TBD was left in one of the facts and issues. There was, because as you all know, the Vision Committee met after the last agenda-setting session, and so there were some things there. And I appreciate Commissioner Hul flossing that and asking a few questions earlier today. And we will, it doesn't change substantively the actions tonight, so don't feel any reservations about that, but we will correct those errors and make sure everybody gets a copy of that.
And I think maybe for those who are looking at the agenda item, the most substantial thing to note probably is that the way, as I understand it, Adobe kind of copied in the form responses, you see like three different subrecipients having the same responses when they should be distinct. And it's Project Safe, as I understand it, is the entity that will not be participating in the expanded scope, but the other four will. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I look forward to seeing, you know, the updated version of this document that has that reflected in it, and I'm excited to move forward on this today.
Any other comments from the body? Got Commissioner Link and then Commissioner Myers.
Yeah, it is an absolute shame that this community is in this situation. Pastor Randy Lawrence and his wife Sarah Jo, the owners of Prosperity Capital Partners, who have bought out these apartment buildings and essentially evicted these people. They purport to be Christians. I don't know what Bible they're reading. Eight years in Catholic school, I could not imagine any such Christianity. You know, from what I understand, it's easier for a camel to walk through the eye of a needle than a rich man to get into heaven. So shame on Pastor Randy. He also runs a podcast, The Real Estate Pastor, and purports this to be a virtuous thing, this kind of capitalism.
Commissioner, I appreciate your concerns, but I just ask you to focus on the item.
Well, I want to point out that, you know, we do have folks who are concerned about the homelessness problem in Athens. It is people such as Pastor Randy who contribute to that. We have a university with a growing student population, 6,000 new students in 10 years and only 500 new dorm rooms. This is a crisis that has been coming at us for a long time, and I would hope that these Capital Partners would do something to contribute to the charitable institutions that have to help these people out, including the University of Georgia, which certainly contributes to this problem.
Commissioner Myers?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank our Housing Community Development Department and for putting together this option to what we saw previously, and to thank my colleagues beyond Commissioner Denson and Hul. I think it's been across the board that we've all been sort of pretty outraged and upset about what's going on to the people who were given very short times to find new housing. So I appreciate that work so much. I do have a couple of questions because we did just get this to clarify it. There are four of the organizations have agreed to these, basically to work exclusively with the income-qualified individuals who've lost or loss of losing housing because of the lease modifications after August 1st. Is that correct? That's correct there. So that preference or, that's what I was trying to figure out, if it was exclusive or, because I thought the language said exclusive, yes?
The funding is flexible enough to where I think a lot of different residents could fall into that funnel. But we wanted to make sure that there was folks who were captured within this very specific action were at August 2nd, so really trying to speak to the challenge that's out there right now.
And so to clarify again, the, like, I was looking at Acceptance Recovery Center, Advantage Behavioral Health, Family Promise, and the ARC. And in the missions, the first three of those are specifically work with people who have substance abuse issues or homelessness. Does that limit who they can work with so that the ARC would be working with people who don't fit into those categories, or it would be broader for all of them?
The agencies would generally work with the folks who they typically work with.
Yeah.
But understanding that there is a preference for those who have gone through the process of eviction or...
So they'd be working sort of beyond their scope of their missions?
It would be in addition to.
Oh, in addition to, yes, in addition to.
Yes. Well, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I was out of town last week when you all were working on this, but I think that for the first 60 days, that is exclusive, but then it's preference thereafter. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Thornton?
I am definitely going to support number 14, and I had kind of promised that I wasn't going to say anything, but I broke my promise. This issue was brought to this commission long before we took action. I think that Manager Blaine will back me up on that. It came up again back in June, June, maybe July, and it wasn't until we got the outcry from the community that we took action. I think it's unfortunate that we, as an elected body, if we sound the alarm, nobody responds until things blow up. I don't know about Prosperity, whatever. You know, I know it's not real good right now, but we also had an opportunity as local government to buy some of these apartments. We could have bought them. We had ARPA money. We blame everybody else and don't take no responsibility when we fall short, and then when we try to fix it, we want to look like superheroes. These people should not be treated this way, but we could have dealt with this a long time ago. So yes, I support it, but please don't let people be victimized over and over again because now we've stepped up. This is serious business, people on the streets, and this is not the first time. I don't want nobody in the listening audience to say, oh, we just found out about this and we got to do something, we got to call our state representatives. We could have did a long, when we first got the ARPA money and we were serious, we could have did something long, we could have brought those apartments. We could have done it, and we still can. But I am supporting this.
All right, I have a motion on the floor in a second.
Mayor, I do have a question to staff.
Commissioner Denson.
Thank you.
Go with Commissioner Denson, then we'll have the ordinance read.
To the manager's office and just knowing that there's always a bit of a delay in, you know, being able to get the contracts and stuff procured and signed, do you have any kind of expectation whenever the agencies will be able to have the funding and hopefully be able to connect residents in you?
No, there are a number of things that have to occur, insurance being one of them. You know, we'll move quickly, you know, we'll try to, we understand the nature of the emergency here, but there are a number of things that have to occur on both sides, so it's not just necessarily staff working through things or in our processes, but we're also looking for things such as insurance, you know, things that we've talked about before in the past.
Okay, so as soon as possible, but no?
That's correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Hul?
Yeah, just kind of following up on that. If one or more of these agencies has cash on hand, are they able to disperse it and then reimburse after, or does that insurance need to be procured before they could do that?
We need to have a contract before we can reimburse for anything that any agency does.
Okay.
And that's super critical.
And that contract can't apply retroactively to something that's done tomorrow, so I'd have to...
No, well, that's a possibility. Certainly must have insurance. So that's one of the biggest challenges that we've seen, and, you know, best practices certainly have a contract before any expenditures occur.
Yeah, yeah.
Commissioner Hamby?
Yes, Mayor, I'll be quick, thank you. And Mentor Jones brought up the insurance, the word insurance. And I just, you know, we often hear about insurance that's needed for our nonprofits and for anybody that's trying to help us do some, do some good work here in Athens. And at some point, I'd like for this government to look at some blanket policy that perhaps we can offer the nonprofits or do something with a blanket policy that takes that equation out of the situation for them. So it makes it easier for them to do that, and it also allows for the dollars that we're programming to these organizations to go towards what they're doing to help us with instead of insurance. So anyway, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Future discussion. Commissioner Thornton?
I think Assistant Manager Jones and I talked about this. This problem is not going to go away, it's not going to go away real soon. But there are national groups that work on low-income housing, and one is NACA, and I think it's the National Association of something. But can we get some information from your office about NACA and see how, if this could help us map out something in the future? It doesn't make no sense to recreate the will if there's expertise out there that can help us. So I can get you somewhere, but it's NACA, I know it's NACA, I just can't remember what the acronym stands for.
All right, there's a motion in a second. If you could read the ordinance, Attorney Drake?
An ordinance to amend the FY 2023 annual operating capital budget for Athens Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide grant funding from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, through the Community Development Block, grant CDBG Corona Vibe Funds, allocation to for expenses related to prevent and address homelessness in the community and for other purposes.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to item 15 with the authorization of the Strategic Plan to Address Homelessness, which we discussed at the last meeting. Do I hear a motion for approval?
I move to approve.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Myers, second from Commissioner Denson. Any further commentary, Commissioner Myers?
Yeah, I was very careful to, a week or so ago, to read over this proposal for this plan because it was the only one submitted, and so I felt a real responsibility to look at the details very closely on it. And I have to say, I mean, I read it and marked it up, this is from the Clabbers Group, and I was very impressed. I could visualize the whole process and its parts, as well its deliverables, which include two plans. I like this, not only a homeless strategy plan, but an ARPA spending plan. This also... liked this, not only a homeless strategy plan, but an ARPA spending plan. This also should be getting going, I think, just in the next through couple of weeks. And so it should be, there's a whole, if you look at the agenda item, you can see sort of the schedule, at which point the data will be collected during this fall. And you can see from there really the substance of what's there. It embraces our community and commission goals of using one-time ARPA funding to look for long-term solution. They have 16 years experience worth working with HUD, homeless assistance programs, and their grantees across the country from West Virginia to Arkansas to California. They spell out the kind of data gathering and analysis, and their research questions are really right on and focused. There's actually considerable public interaction here with stakeholders, the homeless individuals themselves, and with providers, really having looked at some of these proposals for plans at other points and been like, oh, we can only have four public input sessions. I was, you know, or that's going to add on a whole bunch of money. I was very impressed with the kind of public input that was in here. I think this group has a proven track record. And I think it gives us something to move forward with. We're going to be approving another grant for a plan, a couple of items further down the line. And what I'm seeing consistently is that there's a lot of federal money to address some of these issues. And we have to, to address homelessness, this is not something we can take, we can solve out of our general budget. We have to be using the monies we have to leverage other monies at the state and at the federal level. When those granting agencies are looking where to put their funds, they're looking at who's most prepared, who has a plan in place. And I think this will get us there. So I'm happy to support this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Denson?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm also excited to support this here. And, you know, I think a few of us went on a trip to Alabama to see peer cities and how they're dealing. We just got to stop in Birmingham to talk about Agency One Roof there that is working on homeless services. And I was excited to see that this same entity, Cloudburst, actually worked with the city of Birmingham to help draft their housing consolidated plan. And I think we saw a lot of good things coming out of what was going on there. So I think this is a necessary step for us to get to that next level of effectiveness when it comes to us dealing with homelessness here in our city. And as Commissioner Myers stated, you know, a lot of the steps that we're going to be doing here is going to kind of position us where we can actually get more funding, more resources, and again, also ensure that our service providers and also the dollars that the county is spending directly are being more effective. And so I definitely understand the direness, the dire call from the community and folks wanting to see this addressed. And I am right there desperately wanting us to be able to get everyone in our community housed. But this is going to be a necessary step for us to actually be effective enough to pull that off.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Thornton?
I'm not going to support this, and not because I don't think everything that Commissioner Myers said, I didn't, she didn't say anything incorrect at all. And I do agree with Commissioner Denson, the dire call. But if I was sitting out in the audience and I knew that this homeless population was growing, my question would be, why didn't we do this before? We do too many studies and surveys, and we still have a problem. We give money to certain groups and organizations, and we don't have no accountability. We don't even question some of the things that we spend our money on. I know this is going to pass, but if this is the excuse that we need to address homelessness, so be it. I'm going to go along with it, but I'm not voting for it. But we've got to get out of planning stages into action stages. This is not no new issue. Again, I'm not going to vote for any more plans and studies and questionnaires. Give me something hardcore action where people can pull up their sleeves, make it happen, and move on.
Commissioner Hool?
Yeah, a couple of things on this. The first is, I wanted to just address, we had a really good presentation at our retreat on the 18th and 19th from HCD staff about just where things are at in terms of homelessness and the demographics and the statistics around that. And one of the things that really stuck out to me is that the vast majority of the people experiencing homelessness in this community have been here a long time, have been here more than two years. And I think that's important to know because while it is true that there are the occasional stories, they are true of people getting dropped off here, that does not make up a majority of the folks who are experiencing this challenge in our community. And so the majority of the problem that we're trying to solve is one of people who have lived here a long time. And it's one of chronic homelessness, which is a lot more difficult to resolve than it is for people who are temporarily experiencing homelessness and are usually easier to get into a program with the right assistance to get housed. So a lot of the programs that are in place and that are, you know, if not better resourced, at least have a faster track to resolution, rapid rehousing programs and things, they work well for a certain segment of the population experiencing homelessness. But not many of the people that are experiencing chronically and that are, I think, most visible these days. And so for the hundreds of people who are in that situation, many who have been in it for years, and we've had hundreds of people more than there's capacity in the shelters in this situation for years, who have been driven out of properties that they may have been informally staying on before because we've seen development, and we've seen also some property owners get more active in removing people from those situations. This problem has grown more visible, but I don't think it's any less native to our community. I just hope it's understood by folks that the data backs that up. I was also really encouraged by the trip we took to Tuscaloosa, speaking with folks from One Roof. They have a very similar situation there in Birmingham. I mean, in a lot of ways, this is a situation that's similar across the country. And we're always trying to balance swift action with long-term strategic planning. $5 million for homelessness allocated in ARPA sounds like a lot, but it's going to go fast. And if we want it to truly do something transformative that isn't just continuing the work that's already been done, that's only meeting the needs of that limited fraction of the population, then we really need to have everyone at the table to discuss that work. And that's something that I think we're poised to facilitate well that hasn't been done before. And so I'm excited to see this take that next step for us. And just one last thing for note, because I know a lot of people are paying attention to this issue. For people who are earnestly interested in getting involved, the Athens Homeless Coalition really needs more support and will be an agent we continue to work with in this. And an easy place to get involved in that work is starting by going to endathenshomelessness.com. Thanks.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Hamby?
Sure. I have a few questions for the manager, I suppose, about the Clover, Cloudburst Group. So I've read over the proposal, and I've looked at their past experiences, but it doesn't seem, and correct me if I'm wrong, this was the only group that applied for this, is that right?
Yes, this was the second time we went back out. Because of the ARPA funds and homelessness being a problem across the nation, folks that helped facilitate these discussions, this is something a lot of cities are starting to do, are heading towards. So we did not get a response the first time, so we put the RFP back out, and this was the sole response.
Okay. And I'm just looking at their past performance, and they could very well be a good group. I haven't seen anything in here that kind of indicates any sort of who they've worked with in the past of evaluations or an evaluation of how many people, their recommendations may have helped move from homelessness or to a housing situation. Do you know if they have? Or if either recommendations have worked, I guess I'm wondering that these communities have, that they're listing here. I don't see Birmingham on here.
I don't, I don't believe that we have in our possession any metrics.
I just want to, you see why I'm asking. I just wonder if, you know, they're giving good advice.
Well, all I can say to that is they appear to be legitimate. They work with other communities. I mean, homelessness, y'all.
It's not easy, I know.
It's not easy. And so I can't speak to their efficacy there. We really look to these folks as a facilitator. We hope that with the different stakeholders and the different, this is a, this government, this town has a tradition of engaging the communities to help get their buy-in and seek answers. And that's exactly what we hope to happen here. There just, there doesn't seem to be a very clear prescription for total success with solving homelessness at this point.
Yeah.
I know that's not a great answer.
No, it's fine. It's an honest one. But I do, I do, I do understand the angst in the community and perhaps for some behind the rail here about us always doing studies on everything. And I just, I think we've got to get to a point where, you know, we are, I think, I hope we're a smart town. We have a university system, the University of Georgia, and Piedmont College, and Athens Tech. I mean, there's several players that have been at the table. And it just seems like, it seems like we're not, we're not moving. And I don't, I don't know why that is. I mean, but I don't know if doing a study after study is the answer. I do intend to support this because I want to see, see what happens and see what recommendations they come out. And hopefully they'll be good ones. And hopefully we can, we can be a model for how, how things can work in the state and the country. I hope so. So anyway, just my two thoughts. Thank you.
Well, Mayor, if I could, if this is any help, I was fortunate enough to go on the trip to Tuscaloosa, and there was an official there. And we were, while we were talking about workforce development, I think it applies to a lot of these sticky issues that cross different, there's no one, no one group or entity responsible for solving this problem. We've got to collaborate better. And this person said to our group, let me guess, you've got, you've got resources, you've got people willing to do the work, you just haven't coordinated well at this point. And I would say that there's great work going on in this community. We all know that. This is not, the objective here, y'all, is not a 21-page piece of, you know, collection of papers, but it is a process that we all go through together. We know that there are groups of people meeting and frustrated about homeless, homelessness, and trying to come up with answers. But they're meeting independently. And so let's bring them all to the table. Let's talk about what each of the institutions have to do, what, that's the business community, nonprofits, the government, the school system. What can we do to try and mitigate this as much as possible? And that's what my hopes are for the process, that we all go through this together and emerge with a greater understanding of what the problem is. We've had the opportunity for people to voice their ideas about what are some successful interventions. And in a transparent way, there are priorities that are recommended to the mayor and commission for this body to decide how to allocate those resources that we do have left remaining, as opposed to just having another study.
Got a couple more commissioners, Commissioner Link, Edwards, Davenport, and then I'll circle back to Commissioner Myers.
Yeah, like Commissioner Myers, I was impressed with this nonprofit or this consultant's bonafides, it seems. They're, they're from the DC area, which has been dealing with homelessness for many decades. I grew up in that, in that area. And there's a long history of dealing with that issue there. So I would think that they have significant experience. You know, this is a problem, you know, that we've been, has been coming to a head for quite some time. And, you know, a previous administration was disinterested in tackling it. And it's really gotten out of control. And this is a plan that should have been made years ago. And, you know, we should have been tackling this on this commission earlier. We had a work session scheduled in early 2020 that was canceled. And we put off even those initial discussions to begin to tackle this. And we've been throwing spaghetti at the wall ever since. If I recall correctly, our, our decision to implement an encampment is kind of a form of throwing spaghetti at a wall, but it, we're in a crisis situation, and we at least got 50 people off the streets and in some kind of safe environment. But I also recall that those who opposed that encampment opposed it because they were calling for something like this, a strategic plan. And here we have it. It should have started years ago, but at least we're getting started now. And, you know, we can keep throwing spaghetti at a wall, or we can, we can get these highly trained professionals to do the work that our local government isn't necessarily trained to do. But to do the work and come up with a clear plan and a clear course of action so we can quit throwing spaghetti at the wall and start actually getting people in real homes and engaging those partners that the manager just mentioned. And Manager Williams, I hope that we will engage the University of Georgia in this process because they do hold quite a responsibility for the problem at hand. And we certainly have concerns among those who are associated with the university regarding this problem.
Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was looking over this project proposal, and, you know, I, I too am exhausted by, by studies and public input and, you know, but Manager Williams, when's, when's the last time we had a point-in-time survey done here? It's been a couple of years, hasn't it? Or it's been more recent?
Yeah, it's been recent.
Okay.
There's a couple of year lag between this one, this year, and the prior one.
There's one this year? What was the number? I hate to put you on the spot.
It's about 275.
Thank you.
Yeah. And that's, that's, that's unsheltered.
Right. Yeah.
So not sheltered. And then the school district has its own estimates of how many students they think are couch surfing and things of that nature. So we've got different anecdotal sources, but the actual point-in-time count for unsheltered was 275.
Good.
Point-in-time.
Thank you. Thank you for that update, because I know we missed a couple of years.
But it was done in February and published in May or June of this year.
Thanks. You know, when I look at the work that this group is going to do, I guess one thing that comes to my mind is the understaffing that we're currently experiencing in the Housing Community Development Department. I mean, a lot of this work looks like something that could be coordinated by that office if we were fully staffed. You know, we need more housing in this community.
Period.
You know, we need more housing. Now, it's going to be difficult for this body to approve housing because folks fear the unknown. They fear change. They fear more density. More density creates traffic. More density creates space for people, for people who are living on the streets right now. And because we have such a need for housing, the housing that exists can command such a high price, which is putting us in the situation that we're in right now. Now, I know that, you know, I hear about, you know, the government getting involved in possibly purchasing apartment buildings. But I think we can get there one step before by just approving projects that have higher density, specifically where there is transit, services. These projects come across our desk, and I think if, we can wait on this study, we can wait on the results. We're going to have to wait a few months. But we could act expeditiously on this problem, as we have with some projects that have come across our desk, by approving more density to allow for more housing to help calm this white, this white-hot market. Thank you.
Commissioner Davenport?
Thank you. So when I read the study, and I read it just like Dr. Myers did, the proposal, excuse me, from Cloudburst Group, there, it's not necessarily a study. It's bringing people together, getting people involved, having community buy-in, getting the community input. Because we have a lot of these nonprofits in town who are working in silos, people who are working on their own to tackle homelessness. We need to bring everybody together. And I believe the Cloud Group, the Cloudburst Group, excuse me, will be the best group to bring that together. Because it's definitely not in the purview of the government to tackle single-handedly homelessness. We need everybody in the community to get involved. And I feel confident that even though the Cloudburst Group was the only applicant, that they have a history, if you just, you know, do a simple Google research search, that they're going to help bring Athens together to tackle the homeless. together to tackle the homeless, but we got to do something, and this is not necessarily a study. It's just, you know, we got one group doing this, one group doing that, let's get together, and what they're going to do is just make recommendations.
Got a handful of second timers. Commissioner Myers?
Yeah, just really quickly, I, I just, I'm thinking about some of the comments that were made from the community and from UGA parents and others, and I just wanted to, to point out as well that we know this is an issue here in Athens, both for those people who are experiencing homelessness, many of whom have physical and emotional and substance issues that they're dealing with, if not all of them, and also for, for homeowners and businesses and UGA parents and such. I, I want to make sure that you do know that there are a lot of, there's a lot of people and organizations already working on homelessness here in Athens. We're not starting something new, and we're not just starting to address this problem. I just put in homelessness providers in Athens and got 20 different organizations that came up in Athens. We have, I believe in the Facts and Issues Agenda, we've deployed more than $8.8 million to address homelessness in our community, and that means us, for the most part, getting funding that we've gotten from the federal government and getting it to these different groups that are involved. And there's more, which we're looking at right now, and that doesn't include all the, all these, these organizations' money that they've raised. So I, I think I'm coming back, and in fact, I was really, when I put my hand up first, it was right before Manager Williams started speaking, and I think part of the issue thing is we are, there's tons of people who are doing great work because of, you know, reaching out from their hearts and what they believe is the right thing, but we're all working at this, and we don't have a coordinated plan, and I'm hoping that this will bring us together. I mean, let's be honest, there's like, I think I did another search, there's 50, over 50,000 people homeless in Georgia. We're not the only community facing this, and this is going to be an ongoing issue that we're going to address, and I hope we can address it the most effectively and humanely as we can, and this is a, a continued point that we're, we're doing with, by putting this plan together.
Commissioner Hul.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I appreciate those remarks. A couple other things I wanted to underscore. One is that this dovetails with the housing affordability investment strategy that we approved last month, and while these are both more strategic plans, I mean, I think this is an example of two notable things. One is that we're overlapping the plans more effectively than we've probably done in the past, and another is that this government is taking on work that historically it hasn't, at least for some time, and certainly not in this way. So, so I'm excited to see how these things do move forward, and while it is painstaking in how slow this can feel, it's, you know, always the, the flip side of trying to be thoughtful about it is you can't immediately meet the immediate need. I, I just wanted to share a couple other lessons from the, the trip that we took to Tuscaloosa and the retreat that we had. You know, one is the continuum, our continuum of care, our Athens Homeless Coalition, was quite fractured and inactive a year ago, and is now quite active, but is overstuffed with service providers. And one of the things that we learned on this trip from the folks in Birmingham and at One Roof is that if your continuum of care organization, which for us is the Athens Homeless Coalition, is pretty much entirely made up of service providers, then it makes them less effective at the work that they're seeking to do. You want to have them involved, but the board to really bring different expertise and perspective from the community, including from people who have been, you know, have directly experienced homelessness, but also folks who can bring expertise without the bias of the agency they're a part of. And so I'll, I'll just reiterate the, the need for more people to be involved in that. I know Jason Leonard, who came with us on that trip and serves on the Downtown Development Authority and works a lot with the Chamber of Commerce, was really pleading with his colleagues to get more involved so that he wasn't the only non-service provider on the board. And so I would, I would extend that plea generally to the public here. The other thing I wanted to underscore is that the data that we have is incomplete, especially with regards to the point-in-time count. Pretty much everyone agrees, and this was reiterated at our retreat, that the point-in-time data is undercounting, and it's really hard to know by how much, but we know that it is. Another thing is that everyone sees a lack of effectiveness with our HMIS system, that's our homeless management information system, both because the data in it is incomplete and because there is an inconsistent use of that system across service providers. So when we're thinking about how to be strategic with our funding and the next steps we take, a lot of that is getting all these people who are doing the work to be better coordinated, and I do see this agenda item as doing exactly that. It's going to help us get more people involved, help get the people who are involved better coordinated, and assist not only the unified government, but ideally that Athens Homeless Coalition, our continuum of care entity, to be maximally effective. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Hamby?
Sure, and I'll just, I'll again, try to be brief. You know, I keep hearing the words, bringing people to the table, getting people involved, partnering, and I'm just going to say this, you know, it's going to be hard to do that when we have, when we have specifically folks behind this rail who want to criticize and lay blame at the very folks we want to have help us, and the very folks we want to have at the table. So that needs to stop. If we want people to help us, let's work together. We can disagree, and disagree good, but, but there's no reason for blame, and there's no reason to, to demonize people that we want at the table. Thank you.
Commissioner Thornton?
I was going to say, I also went on the Tuscaloosa trip, and I heard, I heard a lot, but there were, and I'm not going to name, and I think Commissioner Hul probably named a couple of them. There were four things that I took away from that homeless meeting that we could do today without, without this strategic plan. There's four things that we could do today if we were willing to do it. That's, that's one comment. My next comment is, most of the commissioners probably were not, and maybe, I don't even know if, if Manager Blaine was on board then. I don't know, but in the black community, we used to have Tent City, right off of 29, and we clear-cut that area. Ms. Porter used to help, the same things that Charles Hardy is doing now, Ms. Porter did for those homeless folk in her backyard, and we clear-cut it. And we clear-cut it without a plan on where those folk were going to go. So now we are trying to hustle together, and, and I agree with Commissioner Hamby. What I, you know, that trip to Tuscaloosa was very eye-opening, but it definitely was not a silver bullet for me, and I'm not naive. I do have some concerns and hope we get to debrief, debrief about that trip, but working together, so we got to bring somebody here to show us how to work together. I don't get that. We got to pay somebody to, to show us how to have some coffee and some juice to talk over issues. And I think Commissioner Link mentioned this group is out of, was it DC? I wonder what the homeless population is in DC? You're, you're bringing somebody here, can't even clean up their own homeless problems. So I'm still going to not vote for it, but I do support us coming together, and if this is how we got to do it, to pay somebody to show us how to play nicely together, then so be it.
Go ahead, Commissioner Denson.
All right, let's be very brief, and, and yeah, I mean, I think some of us are just citing this Tuscaloosa trip because we had this specific sit-down with their homeless continuum of care provider, and to me, it was, it was, it was a massive step, and I think it showed how far away we are from being able to take on this issue, because our continuum of care has kind of been just doing the absolute bare minimum, for folks who don't know what this is. It's a federally created entity that's supposed to be overseeing kind of the expenditures and allocation of a lot of the funding for homeless services, and we realized that we were very, very far away from what other cities were doing, but we also realized that a lot of the key partners in this community are not involved or engaged. And so I was, it was very, uh, I was very optimistic that was in a room. A lot of it, we had leaders from the University of Georgia and leaders of the Chamber of Commerce and the school district, all of these key players, and we all kind of realized that we had not been working together when it came time to address homeless, homeless issues and homeless services. And I think we all realized that we were prepared and ready to step up. We are, we are organizing follow-up meetings to this so that we can actually take those steps, but one thing we do not have, and I don't even want to say this is a, we shouldn't call this a study, the name of this is in the, on the agenda item, this is a strategic plan. We do not have a strategic plan. That's obvious, right? That's how we're, that's why we're in this situation, y'all. We have money coming in, we have resources, we have providers, yet we're still having these problems. We need a strategic plan, we need to be effective. You can have all the funding in the world you can, you want, but if you're not spending and using those resources effectively, you're not going to get anything done. And if you don't have all the partners sitting down at the table with you, committed to it, you're not going to get it done. And again, we have those meetings, they're starting, the University of Georgia, I believe, is on board, Chamber of Commerce is on board, local business owners, downtown business owners are on board, they're having those meetings. I really hope that this group here, we will move optimistically together with all those partners that we haven't had in the past, create a strategic plan, and start implementing it. So with all that being said, I'm excited to go ahead and vote on this.
All right. I appreciate everybody's work on this, staff particularly, Assistant Manager Jones, thanks for beating bushes to make sure that we're able to move forward. Thank you for all your work. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Yes. Yes. Thornton?
No.
Hamby?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Link?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Denson?
Yes.
Hul?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
A yes, one no.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, item 16 is a Athens Transit Request for FY22 Funding to Close a Funding Gap. There's an ordinance associated with this. I'll just have Attorney Drake read that now.
An order is to amend the FY2022 annual operating capital budget for Athens, Clark County, Georgia, so as survived funding for transit operating expenses and for other purposes.
Do I hear a motion for approval?
So.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Denson, and second from Commissioner Thornton. Commissioner Denson, any follow-up?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mayor. And I just want to have a clarifying question here to the manager. So looking at, make sure I remember, yeah, on the history here, on history number 10, it just says on June 8th, G.D. notified ACC.gov Transit that the FY22 5307 grant was pending. FDA approval would not be available, and FY22 is previously indicated. So my understanding is the reason that we're doing this here is that we thought we were going to be getting some federal funds and for the previous fiscal year, but they're going to be coming in later, putting us in a situation where we have to kind of make up some of those funds, which will be coming, or we're assuming it will be coming.
The answer's yes. Now, as we continue to dig into the cost of providing transit in this, at this time, the sources of the funding, I just want to, we need to have another conversation about this once we get past this, about the expectations around T-Sploß and the expansion of routes, and it comes at a good time, because we're about to kick off our transit development plan. Another plan, talking about. But it is something that's required by the federal government, and they keep giving us money, so we want to do that. No, but it is a great, it's a good process to go through and hear what the community wants out of their transit system. But I think that a lot of, there's so much going on that, that maybe some voters and some elected officials felt like, well, T-Sploß passes, no problem. Well, that's not the case. So we've got to revisit this, and we've talked about staff maybe coming back to y'all at a work session and kind of talking you through, certainly as we lead up to the budget, what some of the mechanics of the funding and the challenges are, so we can align expectations as we go into TDP, so that we can emerge with a system that works for the people that we can afford.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for that clarification. Yeah, definitely the, for plugging the transit development plan. A lot of people write sometimes about wanting to see improvements, that is the time to be pushing for that. And just the tackle, the, the comparison or somehow the correlation saying that, that if we didn't have, if we hadn't gone zero fare, that we would have more frequent bus service. It's just, it's just unfortunately, it's not true, which is why we didn't see a reduction in service when we went zero fare. We actually have, to my understanding, the most expansive service that we've ever had before while we have zero fare. We go further into the northern parts of the county, we now have Uber trips plugged into it, we now have micro-transit involved in it also, and pretty soon here, more frequency, the most frequency we've ever had on Prince Avenue and North Avenue. And to me, the thing is, and I, I, building on top of what the manager said there, of course, completely supporting this here today, but moving forward, I think what we need to be looking at this is that T-Sploß isn't going to completely replace the general fund money that we gave them before. In the past, a third of our transit system was paid for the general fund. If we put the T-Sploß money there, which we already have in the referendum, and we decide that we do want that frequency, we can put more money in the general fund, just like we did just a few years ago before the pandemic happened, and we can have that frequency. But our fare boxes, people get really, I think, confused by how much money came in those fare boxes. Taken, UGA students, of course, didn't pay a fare directly, so the people who actually were using the fare boxes, they only collected $400,000 roughly a year, and that was mainly on the backs of low-income folks who had to use, and actually, the largest purchaser of fares after UGA was Clark County School District, and the next purchaser after that was Athens Area Homeless Shelter and other homeless shelters providers. Money that we were giving to those providers, they were having to use that money and give it back to us to buy fares. Very ineffective use of funds, and very, I mean, fare boxes in general are just a pretty ineffective use of, of, of running a transit system. So saying all that, let's do it all, so.
Commissioner Thornton?
I, I actually second that, because I just, I think Commissioner Denson addressed some of my concerns, and he stated some facts that I don't know whether I missed that meeting or didn't read it on, on the evaluation of what we've done with fare free. How effective has that been? And that came at a time, I think we had a grant or something, when we went into fare free. I would like to see some data on our transportation. I'm going to vote for this, but you had residents speak tonight that had some concerns, and maybe that is where you get to have a process and a plan, and people can come and talk to us about their concerns. But I do think I'm hearing from taxpayers and people who've been here for a while, they just want to know where their dollars are going and how effective they are. We can get up here and say anything and everything, and it looks glowing. Folks want to know where their tax dollars are, they're too hard to come by, and I think that getting that data, like I said, maybe I missed that meeting that we talked about fare free and/or transit, but what did we gain? What did we lose? You know, is the timing, you know? And around, and she's deceased now, but a young lady who lives off of, what street would that be? It's right around Vine Street somewhere, and she says that bus comes by every day with two people on there. She's deceased now. So I don't know how effective some of these bus routes are, but we need to have that kind of data so we can make good decisions. Where, where are people really being picked up at? Where are they having, you know, heavy transportation, whether it's, you know, downtown or not? But it is not real effective if you have two people riding the bus on a regular basis. We need data, and we just don't, and I know we're short, honest to God, I know we're shorthanded, but we need data.
And we could share those ridership figures with you, and we will, and that will be part of the TDP as well, you know, getting all that on the table, letting everybody look at it. I will say that one variable here that's hard to control for is COVID, so the before, you know, fare free and after fare free, you've got that one huge variable affecting ridership, you know, for some period of time, but we will share that information.
Well, we should be able to tell that with the data, you know, looking at it, was this the height of COVID?
Well, it all happened about the same time, that it went fare free and then very quickly COVID happened. But anyway, we will share the data, and then I'm just saying, we have to parse through that together.
We'll parse through that.
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner Hamby? Major Williams, can you indicate for me and for maybe those who are watching, when we anticipate this transit development plan? What's the calendar look like on that?
I think it's later this calendar year.
We pulled it together, we can share with full mayor and commission in response to some questions we've received, but the goal is to be finished by the end of June. to some questions we've received, but the goal is to be finished by the end of June of this fiscal year. End of June will be done. So engagement will be started in the next month or so.
For the public, okay, good.
And I'll repeat that, Commissioner.
And you're made sure that engagement includes areas that don't, that don't realize the service at this point in time, right? I mean, that would be helpful.
I'll just repeat that for the folks that are listening, because I don't think they could pick up Assistant Manager Edwards' voice, but we hope that engagement will start in the next month or so, certainly get going by the end of the calendar year, and finish the entire plan by June of next year, end of this fiscal year.
Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you. I, I'm going to support this funding request, but, but I, I'm disappointed in the way transit has been managed by this county. Again, this just sort of strikes me as a problem that we've got some solutions right in front of us, you know? How is somebody going to wait an hour on Atlanta Highway to ride the bus in the rain? I mean, you drive down Atlanta Highway, you see folks, I mean, we don't even have shelters for bus stops. So, you know, why don't people ride the bus? Well, they don't like to stand in the rain for an hour. I'm glad we're going to put together a strategic plan, but I, again, I just see solutions here that could be acted on maybe a little more quickly to enhance service. Why does it take an hour to wait for the bus on Atlanta Highway? Well, the bus is stuck in traffic. Maybe we could have a bus-only lane on Atlanta Highway. I think those are really some of the solutions that I'm trying to wrap my head around, to make the bus a place where everyone rides. I think fare free has been a program with a good intent. I mean, I look at it as an anti-poverty program, and that's, that's good. I think, I think that's what I see it accomplishing. But I'm really interested, when we're talking about transit, how do we enhance the quality of service of transit? How does fare free work in there? I'm not convinced how right now, based on the information in front of me, but I look forward to the study, I'm going to support this. Yeah, I'm just embarrassed the way that transit riders are treated in this community. It's great that they can ride for free, but, you know, to not even provide a place to sit with a child, you know, to wait to catch the bus, to wait an hour, I think that's why we see buses with two people in them. I mean, who wants to do that? So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Hul?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to respond to a couple of remarks from colleagues. The first is, you know, it's tough to compare our transit system to that of much larger metropolitan areas. I think it's important to note that our transit system has been nationally recognized with awards, has done some really great work, and that does not in any way take away from the fact that I would like to see us go further and do more. But I do think it's important to recognize that our transit system has done a lot to navigate a difficult few years, has also done a lot to expand what it's currently doing, and is certainly trying to poise itself to do much more. Our staff, the humans involved, despite being short-staffed, like many, if not all of our departments, have, have done a lot. And I just don't want to be throwing our transit workers under the bus when we talk about the things that we want to go further with. I think that we really need to think ourselves about what we need to do to fund the system. And so then when we're talking about fares as an option for funding, yes, it is absolutely an anti-poverty initiative. It's, it's a way to also use those funds more intelligently. I mean, when, when we discover that a majority of the fare box revenue is actually revenues we've circulated out to different agencies and just gotten back, that's not a very smart use. When we realize how much it costs just to run the box, that's not like to, to build, maintain the machines themselves, not a, not a, not a smart use. When we talk about the quality of service, the amount of time it takes for people to board and pay their fare delays service. So there's a lot of reasons why this fare-free system is not only important, crucial, for the people who are dependent upon transit, but also a smarter use of taxpayer dollars and an effective way of running a system as a service that will make it more enticing as we grow it. And I do hope that we will be servicing more areas, especially in my case, like Atlanta Highway, I'd really like to see us get out to Stonehenge and Tol tree and Bogart and those areas. And I think that we have a plan being put in place by our award-winning transit system and its staff to have three hubs that will achieve that goal. And that's with the current funding strategy in mind, which we, of course, have to hone and hopefully finalize by the end of the fiscal year. The other thing I want to emphasize is, is that our fare-free transit system is actually a great example of us partnering with the University of Georgia in a meaningful way. We talk about partnerships needing to be meaningful, it's not just putting your name on the paper, but it's putting dollars in the game, too. And when we moved to fare free, there was a huge question and a big tangled yarn ball that staff and UGA staff had to disentangle around how to fund our system with their contribution, and we've figured that out. And so I think it would be a huge disservice to the work of partnering with UGA to backpedal on that work now that we've found a way forward with their partnership. Thanks.
Commissioner Wright?
Thank you. I wanted to add, when we get this information, Manager Williams, making sure that we have a snapshot or a previous agenda item from when we did approve the money that came in from UGA. As I recall, it was a formula, three-part. UGA was reimbursing us for every UGA student who boarded, and we also got our fare boxes, and we got matching fronts from the federal government, I believe, on our fare boxes. So we've lost all that money, and we do need to just go back, get us one of those older agenda items, is how that was mapped out at that point, because I think it's worth looking at. And the students do pay for their transportation with the transportation fee. As a parent of a UGA student, it's not cheap, and I know that's for their buses as well as keeping them off the road for traffic alternatives. But anyway, I clearly, I see a couple of my colleagues saying that's not right, so if we can just get that clarified, because I'm remembering a previous agenda before the fare free. And then, I realize there are long waits in between some bus stops, but some of us have lost bus routes. Route 14 had, on Millage App, South Millage, been for years, established bus route, so established that it's equipped with a seat, it's not covered for the rain, Commissioner Edwards, but it does have a seat and the solar lights. But those are now, have a big X on them, and they don't even get service. So I am looking forward to the next analysis and being able to get my constituents who have been emailing me about, when is the bus route going to come back? Why aren't we using these established bus stops? It's a major way that people, they even, you know, rent their apartments based on that service, and then that service has now been taken away. This is year two of that being gone. So looking forward to this moving ahead, as well as the continued studying that we do for the transit, making it the best it can be.
Manager Williams, can you get us that kind of prior allocation of funds for transit, you know, when we were not in a fare-free environment?
Yes, yes, and I, and I will say, just one qualifier, so where the fares are no longer, obviously, being accepted, we didn't lose any federal funds, but we have to match those federal funds from somewhere, which is where the general fund contribution, and as you can see in the chart and in the agenda item, it shows that our investment in that has gone down over time, and I think we're all looking for T-Sploß to help supplant that and not lose any federal funds. But that amount that, to sustain fare free into the future and expand routes and meet our capital needs is going to be a real strain on what we're looking at.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lincoln, then I'll circle back to others.
Yeah, as someone who's been a regular bus rider for most of my almost 30 years in Athens, I feel like riding the bus has gotten a lot easier, and the fare-free system is part of that. I mean, I can remember shaking out the couch cushions to make sure I had change for the bus and then missing the bus because I spent so much time looking for the change. You know, also wrestling, you talk about waiting in, in the rain, wrestling with an umbrella and trying to get that, that card or that change out of your pocket, that can really kind of be a mess. So, you know, I think that technology has most definitely made things easier with the app. You can see the bus, where it is and when it's, exactly when it's coming. So if that bus is late, you know that it's late, and you know exactly how late it is. So you can spend that extra time puttering around the house or running into a coffee shop. You know, it, I certainly do think that there are plenty of bus stops that could use some shelter or at least a seat. One of the bus stops that I use regularly does not have a seat, I sit on the side of a muddy curb. But we are working on that, we do have a plan to improve those bus stops over the years. So I think it, you know, it's gotten easier, I think, you know, may, maybe it takes more outreach to the public to help them understand that it's gotten so much easier. It does take a little bit of fiddling around to figure it out, to get to understand the app, but once you do, it can become second nature, and it's become really convenient. So, you know, I, I would encourage folks out there to ride the bus. It's, it's so much easier to not have to hunt and peck for a parking space or to fight traffic, or, you know, if you have, you know, some kind of disability, you don't have to worry about having to drive. I have vertigo, I don't drive very well in the morning, and I have bad night vision. So it's, it's, I know lots of people who really don't feel safe driving at all because of certain disabilities. The bus is there, and it has gotten easier to, to ride, and the fare free has certainly made it easier to get on and off of it.
Circling back, Commissioner Denson, then Thornton Myers.
Thank you, Mayor. And yeah, just to put into, so yeah, I definitely recommend look up the, the past Transit Development Plans. I, it's a little bit of my, my thing, so I'm pretty familiar with them and stuff, but the amount of money, again, that we would actually recoup from the local fares and fare box, again, like less than $500,000, that's basically the cost to operate one additional bus per year. And that's, that's, that's how, like, the fare box is not what's stopping us from being able to expand service. What's stopping us from being able to expand service is that we're not investing enough in this. I love that we're having this discussion, we need to have this discussion during budget talks, actually be willing to actually pay for this stuff, because it is expensive, but it is worth it. And again, going back to like the idea of the bus is only having two people on, or however many people, one thing is, you kind of, if you ride a bus from one end to another all the way around, you realize that people get on and off constantly every stop. So you might see a bus that had two people on it, and it had 12 people on it literally 30 seconds ago. But with that kind of, I hear that example thrown out all the time, the cost to run a bus with zero people on it is the same cost to run a bus that is one, was completely full. So we should be doing everything we can to have that bus that is running be as efficient and as effective as possible, as carrying as many people as possible. By removing fares and any other hurdles you can find, you're putting more people on that bus. It doesn't change the cost of really, of how much, you know, it costs to operate that bus, it's the same if it's full or if it's empty. I'd rather have full buses than empty buses, and having people who can't afford to get on the bus kind of limiting how many times they're riding and such. So anyways, yeah, I, I love that we're going to have this discussion, and again, to folks who are wanting to see expansions of routes or routes brought back in, people out in my district, four years in the last Transit Development Plan, got together, organized, said that they needed to have service out there on Whitehead Road. We got service out here on Whitehead Road because we engaged with the Transit Development Plan, showed that there was a need for it, they put the bus out there, and that bus, I ride it every week, my daughter rides it every week, and tons and tons of people do. So that's, that's the process there. So, but again, I want to talk about how we're going to add more funding and more investment into this, not trying to take more of it and put some of that funding on the backs of low-income people.
Commissioner Thornton?
I, I wanted to speak to Commissioner Russell Edwards' comments about sheltering spots for, I agree that fare free really does help the folk that are in the lower income bracket and designed for that and everybody else, but it is an anti-poverty initiative. Over two years ago, I made a simple request about a shelter on College Avenue for the neighborhood, the Athens Neighborhood Health Center. And it was like all this bureaucracy that, that I had to go through. And it was at a time when we were talking about the, the re, renovation of Bethel Homes, that was two years ago. We could have still put a shelter or a bench there, but, and I don't know what happened. So I guess I'm requesting, again, if Manager Blaine were looking to, can we, you know, put a lounging chair there for patients that use the Athens Neighborhood Health Center? It was requested by a staff person, and actually, I forgot about it after so long. But if we got to go through a whole bunch of red tape for doing something so simple that is supposed to be designed to help the most vulnerable, we, we, we got a problem. So I would like to reexamine or revisit shelter at the Athens Neighborhood Health Center on College Avenue.
Commissioner Thornton, do you know if the request was for the south side of Hoyt Street, right in front of the center, or right across the street, or both?
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know. It was a staff person, and like I said, that was two years ago, and I kind of dropped the ball. But I do know some of the conversation was around the renovation with Bethel.
Commissioner Myers?
I just want to speak up for transit. I've heard a lot of criticisms this evening, and I see transit trying their best. They are out in their community, representing transit in different places. We have this great app, we have bike racks on the bikes, we've expanded, I mean, in our T-Sploß and Sploß programs, we've had money time and again, I'm sure it's less than they asked for, but for bus stop improvements and such. And, and so I see them working. I mean, there's a bigger issue here in terms of, you know, fighting the mindsets of our auto-centric world, and I have that same thing myself. And as we get closer to this more formal or discussion of transit down the road that we as a commissioner have, I'm going to, I'm going to challenge myself to use Athens Transit more so that I can speak a little bit more about transit from having used it rather than from observing it as I pass it in my car or my bike.
All right, I have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Denson, and a second from Commissioner Thornton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to the award of the contract for dental insurance to Cigna, be willing to entertain a motion to that effect? Motion approved. Second? Got a motion from Commissioner Edwards, and a second from Commissioner Hamby. Commissioner Edwards, any follow-up?
Take care of your teeth, everybody, just got one sec.
Commissioner Hamby, one or two?
None, really. I'm, I'm sorry. I'm good, thank you. My teeth are good, I think.
All right. Any further dental advice from the body?
Floss.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah, false, and my dentist says floss.
Motion carries. All right, item 18 is an Environmental Protection Division Recycling Waste Reduction and Diversion Grant. Do I hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Wright, second from Commissioner Hamby, and there's an ordinance, I'm going to have Attorney Drake read.
An ordinance to amend the FY2023 Annual Operating Capital Budget for Athens, Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide grant funding if ordered from the EPD Recycling Waste Reduction Diversion State Grant for solid waste recycling, operating capital expenses, and for other purposes.
Commissioner Wright, any comments?
I've read, but.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
All right, any others from the body? All in favor, please, oh, Commissioner Hul?
A question that's related to what this grant is about, real quick, and it's just if, requesting an update from staff, unless it's readily on hand or from you, Mr. Mayor, about our, I believe it was assigned to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, which we formalized more recently, about single-use plastics. I mean, that's been lingering for years, and just, you know, that's one way to reduce waste, so.
Commissioner Devonport?
Could we have, or could we get an update on the status of that proposal?
Commissioner Devonport sits on that body, I don't know, Commissioner, if you want to make any comments?
So, that is a very interesting topic, and thank you for bringing it up. We need...
We need, we're waiting on getting data from UGA as well as throughout the community because there's a legal issue involved, so we're just waiting on that data.
Any more follow-up? Assistant manager? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, moving on to another great grant opportunity. This is the Safe Streets and Roads for All Action Plan Grant Application. Attorney Drake, I'll just have you read the budget ordinance right now.
I think that's the one I missed, Mr. Mayor. I'm pulling it up now.
Item number 19.
That's right. I think there should be an ordinance with this grant, Mr. Mayor, but I'm not seeing it in the agenda item.
All right.
That may be why I missed it.
All right, if we need that, we'll return to it next month. But for the purpose of this item, do I hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Myers, second from Commissioner Hamby. All right, and the components of the grant are outlined in the agenda report with several successful programs we've already been involved in being extended. Any further comment, Commissioner Myers?
I just want to point out here that this is an example here where there are two types of these grants that are being, can be applied for. The second one, the implementation grant, can't be applied for unless we have an action plan completed. So this is actually a grant for the action plan so then we could go forth and make applications for the larger grants. And this goes really well with our new, having hired a new Vision Zero coordinator, our Athens in motion plan, our new completes streets policy and our overall mayor commission strategic plan. So I'm really happy to support this and thank the folks who put this grant together. That's it.
All right, Commissioner Hamby, any follow-up?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, any further input from the body? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Is there any opposed? All right, motion carries. And we're going to move on to item 20. This is SPOS 2020, Project Two, the Affordable Housing Project. And this is a commitment of added financial commitment for the North Downtown Athens redevelopment project in the event that we don't receive the funds that we've applied for from the development, excuse me, from the Department of Community Affairs.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Hamby, got a second from Commissioner Thornton. All right, and again, we hope to hear word from the Department of Community Affairs in the weeks ahead, but we need to make sure that we tee things up so that we can successfully finance this project and so we need this commitment. Any input, Commissioner Hamby? Or do you want others? No? Commissioner Thornton?
No, I have no input.
Commissioner Hul?
Clarifying question, if we don't get anything from DCA, does this leave us with $0 in the ARPA funding for that category?
So we went to the ARP advisory committee and staff's recommendation to this committee was that we do use the remaining funds of the Affordable Housing ARPA bucket. They agreed. That being said, there's still small dollar amount that would have to come from another bucket of funding.
And further clarification, the funds that you set aside for the accelerated, that is not part of this $4 million, so that's still intact. The previous award Assistant Manager Jones was talking about to the Bethel, there's a little bit left there, but that would be the two remaining amounts of money for affordable housing if this passed and the DCA funds are not obtained.
So the long and short of it is, if the DCA funds are not obtained, approval of this tonight means there is no more money in the affordable housing category of ARPA funds.
No, there's still that amount that was set aside for the accelerated.
Sorry, there's no more money that isn't already allocated to that RFP that's coming before us for future consideration?
There would not be a future allocation.
Yeah.
Correct.
But.
After December.
Okay.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries. All right, item 21 is an ordinance under home rule with respect to reducing the quorum requirements for the commission of Athens, Clark County from seven to six. And this is the first reading. Hear a motion regarding this item?
I'll make a motion to discuss it.
Do we vote tonight?
So we have to vote twice. I guess, could you clarify the process because we did have some confusion.
Attorney Drake, if you could outline.
For this to be effective, it had to be voted on, had to be approved in two consecutive meetings. So if it doesn't pass tonight, it will be, it will be dead.
Say that again?
For this to pass, because it's an amendment to the charter under home rule, it had, it would have to be approved by the commission at two regular successive meetings. So if it's not approved tonight, this issue will be.
It would go away.
Okay, all right. So I make a motion on this topic.
To?
To deny it.
All right, motion for denial from Commissioner Wright, second from Commissioner Thornton. Commissioner Wright, any discussion?
Yeah, as I said before, it's, I'm not real sure where the motivation is on this, but some people have it. I hope it's a minority of our group that think that less of us should conduct business. I did check with the clerk and she confirmed that we have had no regular scheduled voting meetings that did not have a quorum. Maybe somebody was tardy and we had to start a little bit later, but the regular scheduled meeting, which provides transparency to the community on our votes happening when they're expected and happening with the process set in place for the community to know what we're doing, has not missed a quorum. So that was an important thing for me and I think that there's other topics, if we were to study this, I think there's other things such as the number of commissioners to override a veto would need to be addressed at the same time for me to be comfortable with it, as well as the number of commissioners it takes to call a meeting. I think that those would need to be coming forward at the same time, but I'm against this in many ways, but that's the summary.
Follow-up, Commissioner Thornton?
I have nothing to say.
Any other comment from members of the body? Commissioner Denson?
Thank you, Mayor. And yeah, I do believe that's true that we have not had any called voting meetings, but I do know for a fact that we have had called executive meetings that have not had quorum, that we were not able to hold those meetings. So I know, I know those times I came here to City Hall, sat here in City Hall and then wasted my time because we didn't have enough commissioners showing up. So I had to go home and we had to reschedule that meeting. So I do think, so the business of, and a lot, as we all know, a lot of things have to happen in executive session for, if it's a legal issue, if it's to do with real estate, HR issues, those are, those meetings are extremely important. I think we all know that and that has been, I think that is what led us to having this on the agenda.
That's correct.
Yes, so I want, I want the record just to be clear there. Now, that being said, I am not yet certain how I'm going to want to vote on this ultimately. As I kind of said at the agenda setting session, I did not realize that we're going to have to vote tonight. I thought it was going to be a reading and that we'd be voting again. I think that I'm going to be against this motion, wanting it to pass tonight so that it moves forward. And then, because if it fails, the next meeting, it's dead, right? If it fails at either one of the times, correct? So, because mainly I was planning on putting out a poll on my newsletter and kind of actually trying to get more information from constituents on how they would like the issue of commissioners sometimes not showing up and the kind of not being able to do its business. I definitely kind of am weird on both sides of it. I see the, I saw the problems that have happened, but I also think that the solution to this is just ensuring that every single member of this body makes it a priority to do the business of the people who elected them. Though I realize that sometimes that's not, it doesn't happen, so. So I think I will be opposing this motion so that we can move this forward and have a vote on it next month so that I can actually get some input from my constituents on how I vote on it ultimately.
Anyone else tonight? Commissioner Hul?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to make a substitute motion to table and if I get a second, then I'll explain why.
I'll second.
All right, I've got substitute motion to table from Commissioner Hul, second from Commissioner Link. Go right ahead, Commissioner.
So my understanding of the genesis of this agenda item, you know, is that it's addressing a real problem we face, but I think it is the wrong solution, if not a non-solution to the problem. So my current feeling is that I'm opposed to making this change. I believe that it's important that we have a high bar for quorum. I think it's important that the people who are elected to this body do show up and do show up regularly and that a super majority of us are present in making decisions. I believe in the value of that. I want to believe that we can do better than the US Senate when it comes to, you know, weird procedural blockades of action being taken. And so I, I'm inclined to want to keep quorum at seven. But that said, you know, I've sat here too many times and waited to achieve quorum or never gotten it and had to go home. And I hate that it's an agenda item like this that is drawing that conversation into the light. I know that the press hasn't found it newsworthy enough to report on, but we've had real attendance issues. The other thing is that we've had real attendance issues with things where quorum isn't relevant. We have attendance issues at our retreats, we have attendance issues at our work sessions, we have attendance issues at our agenda settings, things where we don't need quorum to do business because no decisions are being made as what's legally defined as business, but certainly discussions are happening that are very fundamental and germane to the decisions we will make. So I would like to have more time for this conversation to evolve, not necessarily with this being the result. I don't feel comfortable approving this tonight, but I do think it's important that we as a commission have a strong understanding of how we as a commission, as a full body, are going to be present for the work that we've been elected to do. So with that in mind, I hope that we can support tabling this and then hopefully have an alternative solution to approve in a month.
Commissioner Link, any follow-up?
No, I think Commissioner Hul summed it up.
Commissioner Hamby?
Sure, thank you. And man, or Attorney Drake. So if it's tabled, that means it pushes it back two more months.
Yes, that would mean push it back two more months. And I would point out that we have to run this public notice in the paper as a condition of doing this, so we'd have to republish that. Depending on when the new solution came up, we may have to.
Push it even further.
Push it even further back.
Sure, okay. Thank you, Mayor. So I do have something to add, if I don't mind. So, you know, I think a lot of this has to do with scheduling, too. When we get a notice that there's an executive session 24 hours before the next day and the executive session, you know, if there's decisions being made in the executive session or a vote being determined in the executive session, that should not be happening, either there or at the retreats. You know, if you want a presence of this commission at the retreat, let's have a substantive retreat. And I personally don't need to be playing games for your passing watermelons or whatever else it is to build, to build a team. If we're going to talk about the issues, I'll be there and I am there, but I don't, I don't need, I don't need that sort of retreat. And Josh and Manager Edwards knows how I feel about sticky notes. So, so all that to be said, you know, it's a matter of scheduling and it's a matter of being, being, making sure that there is a quorum. Clerk Spratlin does that. And if, and some, a lot of us, if we're not able to make it, inform Clerk Spratlin or Manager Williams or Attorney Drake. So, so it's part of letting folks know and communicating and scheduling. You know, for 30 years, we've had this as, as a, as a, as a rule of this commission and it's worked pretty well. I mean, you know, so I don't, I'm not sure, I'm not sure of the hasty change that doesn't involve, you know, public input. I mean, the public voted for this charter. They, they're the ones who said, this is the way we want this government to be structured. And, and I think it's important that the public weighs in on whether or not we change it. You know, you know, at the end of the day, I think it's, you know, I just, I think it's heading in the wrong direction. I think it's been too, too quick to solve, to solve. We're looking for a problem to solve and I don't know that it's there. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Link?
Yeah, the major problem seems to be the lack of quorum at executive sessions. And there's been plenty of times when certain members of the body have deliberately elected not to show up to discuss particular topics that they might have found uncomfortable. I'd like to ask the attorney, would the charter allow for different quorum requirements for voting meetings and executive session meetings?
I'd have to do some research on that.
That might be a tenable solution.
I have never seen that done in a local government charter, but there's always a first time, but I need to do some research on that. I, yeah, I'm not certain about that. I don't know the answer, but I kind of think that might create issues, but I would be willing to search it. It'll certainly be a case of first impression.
Commissioner Myers?
I was, it wasn't clear to me that we were voting again tonight and that's in the same place as Commissioner Denson on that. However, I could either go with tabling it or with voting. Actually, I got my negatives here, but I think the original motion on the floor is to vote against it, right? And to not do that so that I'd have another month to think it through. There is an issue with attendance and there has been. Now, whether or not one chooses to not be here because they don't feel that's worthwhile, that's, that's a choice. I for one want to say that I have been at these, I've been at many conferences, many classes, maybe presentations in the world where I have thought to myself, I want to get out of here. I have not felt that at any of the mayor and commission retreats or work sessions. So I just want to say that they have been profitable for me and I am, that's one place where I'm quick to say, this is a waste of time. I have not felt that. If there's other ways of addressing the situation, that's fine, but it is a situation to be talked about and to be addressed here. So I'm not sure what other, in terms of procedure, I'm not sure, like, once we, and perhaps this is for our attorney mayor to ask, I mean, once we vote on it tonight, if we were vote to either deny it or support it, then we have a month, there wouldn't be any tabling after that, I would assume. And we have given, I mean, isn't this the reason we're doing it twice is to have plenty of opportunity for public comment? I believe.
I would certainly think that's one of the reasons that Georgia code requires two meetings because it's a substantial matter when you go to amend your charter and they want the public to have plenty of opportunity to be aware of it. But, you know, you could, if you, if you vote it down tonight, if the motion to deny to not approve the charter, the ordinance for the charter improvement is approved tonight, that'll be the end of it until it's put back on the agenda. Well, I think we had to wait a certain amount of time in our rules, too. If we table it, then we would have to wait till the mayor or five commissioners, I think, takes on the charter, put it back, deny it back on the agenda, or maybe it's just the mayor, just the mayor, I think. Yeah, just the mayor put on the agenda. That means we didn't, we had to make sure we do the right posting, give the public notice. If it approves tonight and the next, next meeting, regular meeting is denied, then it would be dead again. It could also be tabled next meeting, which means we'd have to start the process all over. That's be two adoptions in a row with regular meetings.
So theoretically, it could be tabled to get. And these, and we are following state guidelines and rules. This is not something we're just making up.
That's correct, we're following state law.
Okay, great.
Commissioner Hul?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to actually modify my motion to say a motion to hold until the next regular voting meeting, which is October 4th. If I.
I'll second.
Do you affirm that?
I want you to understand, I'm going to, we will be republishing the notice in anticipation that it'll be adopted the next two regular meetings. Is that what we're saying?
Yes. And I also, I'm making that motion as somebody who's prepared to vote to deny it in that meeting, but I think it's important for this body to really reckon with the attendance issues we've had. This is across the board and many of these things do not require quorum of the full body, which is why I don't think this is an appropriate solution to the problem. But, you know, as, as representatives of roughly 13,000 people apiece, I think the onus is on us to show up at the thing we don't think is useful and voice that concern. The onus is on us to show up at the meeting and, and vote against going into executive session if that's what we disagree with. But just not showing up is, is a, is an unclear, I think, negligence of duty. And the other thing that I think is important to recognize is that things that are being devalued, like, part of our staff morale issues is that they get us together for a work session or a retreat and there's three of us there. And I'm tired of hearing our staff get praised in these meetings when the cameras are rolling, but have no. but have no one in the retreat or in the work session to hear them out. I'm tired of sitting in agenda settings and having people walk out before they're over. And it's not just executive sessions that are announced last minute, these are executive sessions that have been announced far in advance and been scheduled at the end of agenda setting or voting meetings, and then people have left our meetings early, including meetings that didn't go very late, instead of sticking around for that. So, yes, I agree with the points being made for the motion to deny. This is not, in my opinion, what we should do to solve this problem. But also, we've got a problem.
Substitute... Mayor, I don't think we need any lecturing tonight. I mean, a lot of us behind the table grasp the issues. We have the capacity to understand what's going on and what's happening at these work sessions and what's happening at the manager's office. Send us materials that we read and reread, and the public has these materials as well. So...
We've had a lot of questions tonight.
Excuse me. Commissioner, just one more time, please.
So what I'm saying is this, I appreciate you not wanting to take hasty action in changing the charter. I think that's important because the folks in this community voted on this charter 30 years ago, and it's lasted for that long. All I'm saying is that perhaps we need to be a little bit more mindful of the public's time and our time in how we're scheduling these meetings and what's being discussed at these retreats, what's being discussed at these work sessions. When these work sessions last until 11 o'clock at night, what public is benefiting from that? What are we benefiting from that? And that's all I'm, that's what I'm saying, is let's do a better job of scheduling. As an example, next week, we've got two work sessions scheduled. And that's a lot, that's a lot for the public to, and one of them is a special session. So that's a lot for the public, and it's a lot for this commission. And a lot of these subjects are subjects that you want on the work session, Commissioner Hull, and only you. And so what I'm saying is perhaps we need to do individual homework with our management and with our staff to learn what's going on. Manager Williams does a good job, and staff does, too, in putting together these agenda reports. I read them, I grasp them, and I understand them. If I don't, I'll call Manager Williams or Attorney Drake or Clerk Sprattland and ask the questions that I need to ask. But, and that's the way I, that's the way I do the job. We each have individual ways of approaching this job and individual ways of approaching our constituents. I have a lot of neighborhood meetings in my district, and I attend those meetings. So, and I think that's important to do. Outreach is important, to be able to share what this government is doing. I don't believe that this action and changing the charter is the right way to go about it. And I think, you know, scheduling and just each of us doing our own individual homework in order to best serve our constituents. Thank you.
All right, so motion on the floor, Commissioner Denson.
Thank you, Mayor. And just, I mean, I think I do see the benefit to this is that we are having this conversation that needs to happen because there is a problem. And, well, I think that there are certain tasks of this job, such as outreach and definitely personal research you can do on your own personal way. There's some business that, as per the charter, you can't do in your own personal way. You have to have quorum. And that's the whole discussion we're having here. We can't go into executive session to hear very important matters that have to do with all sorts of issues, amazing amount of issues, that you have to be in the meeting to actually be educated about, and that cannot rely upon a personal way of doing the job. It literally, as the charter says, requires a quorum of the commission to do so. And that is the problem that we're dealing with. And that also expounds to doing our interviews for boards, authorities, and commissions, our BAC interviews. There are many times that me and the mayor, we're the only one sitting in the room, just about a month and a half ago, doing interviews. And that is not okay. And so that, there is this work that, at times, yes, we can do our own personal ways, but there's also responsibilities that we must do as a group. And, again, I'm not necessarily convinced that this is the way we need to go, but there is a problem. And I think that this conversation isn't about lecturing each other necessarily, but I think it is about informing our constituents and the populace in a public manner, which I think we're always talking about trying to be transparent. I think it's good to have a transparent discussion about this. There is a problem with attendance. We have had meetings that we have not been able to do the business expected of us because not enough commissioners have shown up. We do constantly rely on the same commissioners over and over and over again to do the boards and authority commission and commission interviews. There are some commissioners that I have not seen in one of those BAC interviews in years, and there are some that are there every single time for hours. So there is a problem here. If we're not going to take this route of fixing it, we need to find a way to fix it some other way.
Commissioner Wright?
Yeah, we've gotten a little scope creep on the topic here. So I think every retreat talks about improvements we can make with the boards, authorities, and commission in interviews. So let's tackle that, but this isn't part of that. This topic is not touching on that, but point well made. So if we would continue to be aware of those people behind the rail that can make a quorum, who have full-time commitments, part-time, multiple part-time commitments, whether it's family, work, jobs that they run, jobs that they own, and when we're polled on when, who can attend a retreat, and, "Oh, I say I can attend," and that's when y'all pick the retreat, so be it. I don't take it personally, but that's how y'all pick it, that's how y'all roll it. But then you want to pick on me for not being there when I said I couldn't be there. So this is, this is the kind of stuff retreats are made of, to talk about. But changing the quorum, changing the charter, is not solving those feelings, you know, having your feelings hurt because somebody isn't in the work session with you, when it's a topic that some of us have been studying for years. So we, learning curve, we're going to have a new learning curve coming up with new commissioners, and we need to plot our time strategically. And when people have work commitments till 5:00 and planning executive sessions at 5:00, there's scheduling conflicts. We have to understand what everybody's rest of their life is like. And that's why my point was, the regularly scheduled voting meetings, we have not been without a quorum to take care of business. But anyway, so let's, we've got, I think we could call the question.
All right, got a motion to call the question. I do need a second on that motion.
I'll give the second. This is called the question. Oh, no, no, no.
All right, got a motion from Commissioner Wright, call the question. Second from Commissioner Davenport, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, and so the motion on the floor is the substitute motion to move the first vote on this item to October 4th. All right, and with Commissioner Hull, could you begin a roll call, please? Clerk Sprattland.
Hull?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Thornton?
No.
Hamby?
No.
Davenport?
Yes.
Link?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were saying right to her, yes. Sorry, I'm a no on the substitute motion.
Denson?
Yes.
Five yes, three no.
All right, we will see this on the agenda next month, and so be able to...
Six yes, three no.[1118.33]
All right, everyone, welcome back to our monthly business meeting here with the Athens Clark County Mayor and Commission here in City Hall. It is Tuesday, September 6th, and we are picking up with new business. And for new business, which is receiving its first reading and a vote, we need suspension of rules. Do I hear a motion for suspension of rules?
So moved.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Davenport and a second from Commissioner Denson for suspension of rules. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none. Item 22 is simply a resolution to designate the Athens Classic Center as a facility for court business as required by state law. Do I hear a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Wright and a second from Commissioner Myers.
No comment, ready to move.
Any comment, Commissioner Myers?
No, no comment.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, item 23 is to approve an agreement with the Department of Family and Children's Services for authorization of my execution of an additional agreement for the low-income household water assistance program.
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion from Commissioner Thornton and a second from Commissioner Link. Commissioner Thornton, any follow-up?
No.
Commissioner Link?
I have a quick question. Do we, in allocating these kind of funds and helping out folks that have a hard time paying their water bills, do we do any kind of outreach or assistance in determining if they have leaks or what they're, or anything like that? I kind of wonder if we could help them out further by preventing things that might be driving their bills up. Do we, do we have any of those services?
Well, we do. You know, our portal, if someone signs up for that, because of our automated meters, can detect the constant flow of water and even alert the person directly. As far as staff that just randomly call residents and, you know, and check them for leaks, we don't do that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just wondering, like, people who actually end up needing this assistance, if there's particular outreach and awareness made to them of these services and this ability to check your leaks.
Yes, we put that in water bills that go to every water user.
Okay.
Periodically, you know, that, that what we send out. But it does, and just for the listening public, it does require action on your part to go and register for that.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. That's what I'm thinking, like, it might be worth it to pay particular attention to the folks who require this assistance, just to give them an extra prod to be on the lookout for that. Thank you.
All right, any follow-up?
I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Denson?
Just a follow-up on that. And I thought I remembered before, but Major Williams, if, if there is a, a user who is, is behind, and they, they call into our business office like that, I mean, are they directed to this program at that point, too?
Yes.
Okay, I thought so, but...
Well, I mean, if they, if they, obviously, they qualify, they are advised. We also have some due process for folks that are behind or contest the issue going on, and we do work with folks on a payment plan.
Okay. Just want to make sure. Thank you. And I will say this, if we could get some, some data sometime in the future of just how effective the program's been and how many people have been signing up for it, that would be, that would be great.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. 24 is simply approval of project schematics in the lease agreement for the expansion of the Eastside Athens Neighborhood Health Center. Do I hear a motion for approval?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Link and a second from Commissioner Hul for approval. Commissioner Link, any comments?
No, looking forward to this project.
Commissioner Hul? Any others? All in favor?
Aye.
I just want to abstain until I get clarification from the attorney. I am now serving on the Athens Neighborhood Health...
Board.
Board, so...
All right.
I'm going to abstain tonight, we can get the clarification for future stuff.
Eight yeses and one abstention from Commissioner Thornton. All right, 25 is the 34th Declaration of Local State of Emergency, just continuing the terms under which we're currently existing. Do I hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Got a motion from Commissioner Link, and if I get a second now, I'll have Attorney Drake read the ordinance.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Link, I've got a second from Commissioner Myers to read that ordinance, Attorney Drake.
An ordinance for the 34th Declaration of Local State of Emergency related to COVID-19 and for other purposes.
All right, thank you. All right, any comment? Commissioner Hul?
I'll reiterate a comment from a couple of months ago, which is just that I hope that we can get out of this perpetual state of emergency declaration and move to just an administrative policy being adopted that can handle what's remaining in this that's relevant to our, you know, day-to-day, week-to-week operations when we're in a period of high transmission. It doesn't feel right to me to vote against retaining it when we're in a period of high transmission, as we are now, but I'm not interested in renewing it once we get out of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, hand me the...
Well, I'd say it gets renewed as long as we have, as long as we have COVID around and being a threat to our community. And by, by making this declaration, it allows staff to move forward with some quick things and quick actions if needed. There's been several instances where they needed to do this during these declarations. I too wanted to be over with, but I understand the situation we're in, and I also understand why it is that we have these declarations.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, we now are going to move on to the four items of planning and zoning activity by this body. The first item is number 26, which regards 189, 191, and 193 Highland Park Drive. Again, public input on these happens on an item-by-item basis, so is there anyone who would like to speak to item 26 from Freedom from Bondage or any associated support organizations? All right, seeing none, this is in Commissioner Myers' district. Commissioner Myers, would you like to make a motion?
Well, we, we don't do anything. This is just, we don't vote on this until next year.
There's no ordinance, no motion.
Right. But, but I would like to speak to it briefly to give people an update. I have talked to Chris Church, who is the woman who put through, forwarded the application for Freedom from Bondage, and she and I are talking, we're, we're going to be setting up a meeting with the, some of the neighbors who have expressed concern, and she's also working with a neighbor completely, directly behind her. In addition, she has shared with me several letters, I think about five, from, that are very impressive letters, from Devers Who Win Recovery, Probation Officer, Felony Drug Court, DUI Treatment Court, Athens Trauma and Addiction Center, and some others, attesting to the credibility of the organization that I've shared with, with people. And I wanted to ask the, our planning director, Ms. Church wanted to know how she would get those in officially to you, and am I correct in thinking she should just forward them for those to be in the application for when we review it next year?
She could submit those to me really at any time between now and when it comes back. We're, we're anticipating it right now coming back in March.
Okay.
But if that's something that you're requesting as a commissioner, then she can bring those to me and I can get them to you.
Okay. Well, she's, I just want them in the public record in, in there, so that's there, and I just wanted to give you that update.
Thank you.
All right. All right, any further discussion on that item, as it won't receive that until next spring? All right, moving on to item 27, is there anyone here to speak to 100 Prince Avenue? Evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Josh Coons with Coons Environmental Design, I live at 205 Clover Street here in Athens. This is a pretty straightforward PD amendment, simply stated, we're simply fine-tuning some of the areas around the chapel and the new building that was constructed for 100 Prince to add green space, peel back some of the pavement and create some more pedestrian-scale spaces within the overall development. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. We appreciate your consideration of this request. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Anyone else here to speak to 100 Prince Avenue? All right, Commissioner Thornton?
I definitely support this. I like the, the addition of green space. I don't know if anybody's been over in that area, but it's, it's really, it's really nice, and I think it's going to be a good addition for Athens, period, but especially downtown. So I make a motion to...
All right, motion from Commissioner Thornton for approval. Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second.
Commissioner Hul, to read the ordinance, please, Attorney Drake.
An ordinance to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia, with respect to amending a planned development comprising approximately 3.69 acres and located 100 Prince Avenue in the CDW-PD Commercial Downtown, West End Downtown Design Area Plan Development and for other purposes.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Thornton, second from Commissioner Hul. Any further input? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, item 28 regards 4555 Lexington Road, and I do have Richard Dean signed up for the 10-minute inputs, so if Richard is here, now is that time. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Robert Dean. I live at 235 Wood Grove in Athens. I'm here on behalf of the residents of the Wood Grove neighborhood. It's actually called East Hampton subdivision, and we're opposing the application for rezoning. The rezoning notice showed the subject area as a blank space on a map with no detail about buildings, roads, connections to Wood Grove Drive. I'll call that Plan A for discussion purposes. The building department looked at Plan A, and they recommended denial of the application because it was a non-final plan. That, that denial, I think, still stands to this day, their recommendation of mine. However, on August 4th, the developer promoted a new plan. I'll call that Plan B for discussion purposes. We didn't have a, any idea that that would be the plan, but we showed up and they talked about a new plan. Plan B had two road connections to our Wood Grove Drive, converting our cul-de-sac into an access road to the subject area. Our first opportunity to actually be heard on Plan B was here at the agenda meeting on August 16th. Of course, by that, by that time, the plan had evolved into what I call Plan C. Now it had some detail. Still, I had submitted papers at the beginning of the proceeding with my name, address, email address. We didn't receive a thing from the developer in terms of what they were doing. The plan was changing over and over. Okay, so once again, we had a different, non-final plan which we had to discuss. On the last day of August, we finally received a copy of the latest development plan, which is now supposed to be up for final approval. This I'll call Plan D. Query: Why has this process failed the property interests of those in the Wood Grove neighborhood and other surrounding areas? Fundamental fairness demands that the affected homeowners be notified from the start of the proceeding what's actually going to change in the rezoning. Now the developer is here today seeking final approval of the latest version of a non-final, non-binding development plan. How can we possibly raise meaningful objections to a plan which is not even final or binding or probably not even through evolving? The rezoning notice provides the procedure for protecting the property rights of neighboring community. So what would due process look like in a rezoning application? At the very basic level, notice and meaningful opportunity to be heard about the actual plan which is being promoted. Due process also requires that any rezoning follow the procedure set forth in ordinance section 9-4-3, which mandates balancing of the public interest with the applicant's use of the property. Public interests include, among other things, the preservation of existing land pattern use in the surrounding property, impact on the environment, the detrimental effect on the value of adjacent property, and the aesthetic effect on the surrounding area. I didn't see any balancing of those interests when the application was before the planning commission, but I did hear comments about the urgent need for affordable housing in Athens, so let me discuss that issue. Please don't be distracted by an argument that rezoning would actually create affordable housing. There are only two alternatives here. Approve the rezoning, which would allow R8 high-intensity homes, these aren't affordable low-income rental units, or deny the housing in favor of a larger lot size R15 unit. Again, neither home style would be affordable housing for low-income folks. That's not even an issue here, it's a red herring argument. The other problem with the affordable housing argument is the absence of a showing that the developer will actually build affordable housing. The developer is not a charity. This is not a nonprofit coming in, helping folks. You can expect market rates, you can expect full-price houses, whether they're rezoned or not. Moreover, the developer has already conceded that over 50 R15-zoned houses will be built if the rezoning is denied. Rezoning would only create 35 or so more homes. That's not a whole lot, but in the context of a small cul-de-sac, that's doubling the amount of traffic on Wood Grove Drive right there, 35 homes. You are called on to balance competing interests. So let's be crystal clear. The application is not about 87 new homes or affordable homes or, or any other thing. It's about 35 homes, and whether they'll be set two per acre or four per acre. That's, that's, that's really issue. Also, smaller yards, also less of a protective cover. The core issue is whether the developer's interest in making more money by crowding 34 more homes in the same small size of land outweighs the cost to everyone else from that high-density housing and the crowding of our roads, schools, and utilities. And those costs are not just borne by the "my neighbors" on Wood Grove Drive. They would also be caused for the residents in the subject area and the whole surrounding area, and not just for them, for their children and their grandchildren. Your decision on rezoning will affect permanent changes to our community. And don't be fooled about the computer-generated guesswork on traffic. No one in the world can predict in the future with any certainty. They would be in the, they would be working on Wall Street if they could. We know that everyone going east on Lexington Road and everyone returning from downtown, if they, if they go west on Lexington Road, will have to go down Wood Grove Drive due to the median, which is directly in front of the entrance to the new property. So they'll all be using Wood Grove Drive. So trust your common sense. If you quadruple the number of homes using Wood Grove Drive, you can expect to quadruple the traffic. Forty percent of those problems can be avoided by keeping the R15 restrictions. Also, keep in mind that the developer is asking you to approve a non-binding plan, which could morph into something different, unexpected, leaving the folks that you represent without their property rights, and the taxpayers with the cost of curing the problems. And, and view of the lack of proper notice and due process issues throughout the process, and because of the non-final plans I respectfully submit, there are only two alternatives in order for you to preserve the integrity of the rezoning process. You can deny the rezoning based on a finding unbalanced, the developer's interest in making more money does not outweigh the public interest in preserving the surrounding community and avoiding overloading of roads, schools, and sewers. Or you can deny the application as premature and require that the developer start over again after filing a final and binding plan, which has been reviewed and meets the requirements of the building department. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Anyone else like to speak to item number 28?
Hi, I'm Rebecca Moore, and I live at 320 Wood Grove Drive, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak again. We persist. Nine years ago, when my parents and I moved to Athens, we looked at over 50 homes. We fell in love with the East Hampton subdivision. It was quiet, had a cul-de-sac, little traffic, and it was safe. We've developed lifelong friendships with many of our neighbors. Three-fourths of us are over 60 years old and retired, so we're seasoned residents in that neighborhood. I serve as a community organizer for East Hampton, and neighbors have shared their concerns. More traffic, it's unsafe for pedestrians who now walk in our street with dogs and strollers. We also have a litter problem at the front entrance as the trucks drive by to the landfill. Now, the possibility of more drive-through traffic will impact more trash all along Wood Grove Drive. And I will say, in talking with Officer Charlie Wang, who lives at the cul-de-sac, he mentioned there had been more criminal activity at the backside of the cottages of Lexington. That's where that second access road would be, which could easily spill over into Wood Grove. It would make it very convenient for that kind of activity to spill over. So I, I think like Bob had said, if it stayed R15 and we had 40 homes with generous space, but our concern comes from trying to cram 87 homes and purely for profit. So thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Are there any others here to speak to item number 28?
Good evening, I'm Jeff Carter with Carter Engineering Consultants, 3651 Mars Hill Road. And I did want to point out just a few things about this property. It is very much compatible with the future land use map. There are several properties in that area that's already zoned RS8. I think there's, there's several properties that have mixed zoning. Some of it's RS8, some of it's RM1, and some of it's RS15. So there's, there's several different zonings in that immediate area. We feel like this is a really good transition from RM1 property that's zoned to the west and RS15 that's zoned to the east. So we feel like this property is very well-suited for the RS8 zoning. As far as traffic goes, I did want to make sure that, that you understand that we are installing a right-in, right-out onto Lexington Highway. It's GDOT-controlled, we have talked to GDOT, and they are in favor of allowing us to put a right-in, right-out there, which will include a deceleration lane. As far as the connecting points to the existing subdivision, it is true that we're, we're having to connect in the very back of the subdivision at the cul-de-sac. And that is not something that we necessarily propose, but it's a code issue that's, that's in the, in the county code, that you have to connect to that. So no matter if it's RS8 or RS15, that connection will have to go in the back cul-de-sac. We are proposing a second entrance that is much closer to Highway 78. And the reason that we're proposing that is because we feel like that our traffic will come off of the road into our new subdivision without going all the way down to the cul-de-sac. So we are proposing that second, second entrance. The density in RS8 does allow for, I believe, 3.8 units per acre, so technically by zoning, we could get close to 100 lots on this subdivision. But we know because of sanitary sewer availability, we can't get that many lots. So we are asking, or as a condition of the rezoning, to capping, capping the number to, to 87 lots. Also, along the common property line with the existing subdivision, East Hampton subdivision, we are proposing a 50-foot undisturbed buffer. That buffer is not required by code, but we are, we are providing that undisturbed buffer. And that is an undisturbed buffer, meaning we can't get in there to do anything. It'll be, it'll protect the trees within that 50-foot, 50-foot buffer area. The canopy coverage that is required in RS8... The canopy coverage that is required in RS8 is 15%. And we are, through Planning Commission and through some things that we've heard from you guys, we have increased that to 20% conserve canopy coverage on our site plan.
Mr. Carter, your time has concluded. Do you need additional time, if I can gain consent of the commission?
Yes, I'll wrap up really quickly.
Consent for additional few seconds. Please continue.
All right. So here's our summary. This is what we're proposing to do as a self-imposed condition. Have a cap of 87 lots, maximum of 87 lots, the 50-foot undisturbed buffer along the shared property line with East Hampton subdivision. We will have no attached units, which RS8 does allow for attached units, but we're, as a condition, saying we will not have any attached units. The property will have the third point of ingress and egress that I discussed from Woodhurst Drive, and the property will have a minimum of 20% conserve canopy. And we'll also put sidewalks in as a safety measure on the western side of Wood Grove Drive, south of Woodhurst Drive, down to Highway 78. So we will put sidewalks in in that stretch, which would form a loop. And so I appreciate your consideration and happy to try to answer any questions that you may have.
Attorney Drake. I just have a question. Want to make sure if you're sure about the applicant?
Yes, I am.
I think one thing we've discussed is we're in the process of admitting our zoning ordinance because we want to make sure that the law requires that equal time be given to both proponents and opponents of the zoning application. I know traditionally, we've had this thing where you have to sign up for your 10 minutes. So I have a bunch of caution. I want to make sure that the applicant's had a chance to, if he has anything else he's saying now, he has an opportunity. So ensure he has equal time.
Thank you for that. No, did you need any additional time, Mr. Carter?
No, I am good. Thank you for that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Anybody else here to speak to item 28, who we have not heard from yet? Good evening. Just let us know your name.
I'm Steve Oxman. I'm a developer. I just wanted to say that this project has evolved since we first submitted it, but it's because of listening to staff, listening to Commissioner Davenport, everyone on the commission. I think we made some changes that Jeff mentioned. He covered everything, and hopefully we found something that works for everyone. Also here to answer any questions anybody has, so I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else here to speak to item 28, who we haven't heard from yet? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Davenport for a motion.
Well, I hate that this project has become so contentious, but I am going to motion to approve.
I'll second.
And Commissioner Davenport, just for clarity, do you approve with the conditions that we stated?
With the condition of the Planning Department.
Yes, with those conditions.
Brad, anything else you need?
The only thing that I would clarify is that it was noted by the applicant as part of his presentation that they had offered a condition of capping at 87 and a condition of sidewalk extension. Those are not currently conditions of the motion.
And then, so would you wish to include those?
Yes. Includes the applicant's desire to cap at 87 homes and the sidewalk on Wood Grove.
It's acceptable, Commissioner.
Yes.
Okay, second. Any further comments, Commissioner Davenport?
Yes. So first of all, okay. So we have a housing, and I thank the residents for coming out today. We do have an housing issue in Athens Clark County. This is a great location to put housing, and I completely 100% understand the concerns of the residents, the great residents of District 1. So one of the reasons why there's not a binding plan is because I've been going back and forth with the developer about what's being proposed. One of the things that I stated with the resident, that I am a staunch proponent of the buffer. I believe every neighborhood should have a buffer between each neighborhood. If you build by right, you're not going to have that buffer. If you look at the Discovery Trail, look at all the other residents, new homes, that have been built in District 1 and around District 1, the single-family homes, the lots literally go up to the back of the next residence or the next neighborhood property. I believe in just the dichotomy of separation of neighborhood, and unfortunately, with a straight rezone, with a straight rezone, we as a body would not be able to have a big comment to make, adjustment, because I'd be able to build by right. I believe in protecting, and I completely understand the residents' concern, but I honestly believe in just keeping that light noise, that street noise away as much as possible from Wood Grove, and the best way to do it is through this RS8 zone. I know it's hard to understand. I know it's hard to comprehend, but it just, if you look at all the other developments that's taken place in Athens Clark County, and when it comes to RS8 and RS15, the lot's going to back up straight to the residents. The other thing is, when it comes to the traffic management, we can, we as a body can manage the traffic off of Wood Grove Drive. And I did some research off of Lexington Road at Southeast Clark Park, which is right adjacent, right across the street from East Hampton, on a Sunday morning, and I noticed that the people leaving the Chapman property, excuse me, off the College Boulevard, there's actually a turning lane there. So if you leave Wood Grove Drive, just a line of sight, if you look towards downtown, towards the west, there's a curve on Lexington Highway, and there's Craig Murbs right there in the median, and plus there's an elevation, upward elevation. So it's really kind of hard to see the traffic at that speeds coming, going east towards Overthor. But there's a turning lane right in front of the Cottage Boulevard, which makes, and I've noticed a couple cars, instead of, I noticed a couple cars leaving Wood Grove, instead of crossing Lexington Road to take the, to take the left out going towards Overthor, what they did was they followed traffic up to the Cottage Boulevard, get into the center lane, what meeting is, and take that U-turn in front of them, the traffic supply store. Because you're flowing with the flow of traffic, and it's easier to maintain, it was a lot safer than crossing Highway 78 at that point. But also...
Is everybody okay? Commissioner Davenport, continue.
Okay. And I do apologize. But it just, I'm a big fan of that buffer, and based on the engineering, they're not going to be able to get the 87 homes. You're still going to keep the protected tree canopy in the front, so the neighborhood will not be noticeable. When it comes to sewer, yeah, I talked with our staff, they're not going to be a main, not going to be a sewer problem. Also, with the connection in the back with the cul-de-sac, we can mitigate all the traffic that will be entering Wood Grove. I know up to 80 to 87 homes seems very dramatic for this situation, for this location, but if you look at the, like the applicant said, if you look at the area, there have been, you know, unfortunately, that density is coming towards this location, and it's highly needed. Also, with the sidewalks being installed, it's a win-win. You've got Walmart right up the street, walkable. It's a node for public transportation, for walking. You've got the schools. I promise, the East Wood Grove people, you're going to have some great neighbors. And just that buffer zone is something that sold me on it, and one of the reasons why there's no binding site plan is because, like I said, I've been working with the developer to make sure that this project is less intrusive to the East Hampton individual residents.
Thanks, Commissioner. Any follow-up, Commissioner Link?
I think Commissioner Davenport did a really good job of summing up the conditions of this rezone that are going to make for a better project than if it were to be a by-right project. That 50-foot buffer is huge. You don't see that anywhere. You don't get 50 feet of trees and wild growth between neighborhoods or lots or anything like that. So I think that is going to assure that the people of Woodbridge are protected from any potential future development, and that they'll continue to have trees shading their backyards and not be able to see right in their neighbors' windows through the backyard. So I think that protection is, you know, a good reason to argue for this rezone, as well as that sidewalk you're going to get. You know, Woodbridge is a public street. These are public streets maintained by Athens Clark County and open to the public of this county. We have a housing crisis. We've heard it over and over again. And I know we talk about affordability. These smaller homes on smaller lots are most definitely going to be lower price points than larger homes on larger lots if this were to be built by right, and there are going to be more of them. Instead of 30 homes, you're going to have an additional 50 families who are going to have the opportunity to buy a home. I know one person who spoke, spoke about how they looked at 50 homes when they moved to Athens. You're not going to find 50 homes on the market in Athens now. You're not going to have the opportunity to look at 50 homes because the market is so, so crowded, and that's what's driving these prices up. Hopefully, projects like this, with this very moderate density enhancement, can help stabilize our market. It's going to take time. None of it's going to happen overnight. I live in an RS8 neighborhood. Most of your neighborhoods in-town, Boulevard, Normal Town, Cobham, I believe most of Five Points is RS8. That's just kind of a normal neighborhood size. These larger lots out in the suburbs are a product of an old-school, white-flight, somewhat racist zoning code that was built at a time when people were trying to get away from in-town and lower-cost housing. And so I think this is a good project. I mean, we don't have a binding site plan, but the fact of the matter is, this is a really difficult piece of property. This long, skinny piece of property, there's not a heck of a lot more you could do with it, other than this one street with the houses on either side.
Commissioner Wright?
Yeah, thank you. I'm just not sure what to say. I'm not going to, I feel like trying to pitch this to these people who are adamantly against it is on the edge of being patronizing. I hear Robert Dean covered so much of how I feel about this, the way it's changed. It's a non-binding, constantly-changing plan. I just feel like the whole process and what's going to go in there should be getting that scrutiny that it got originally, as to what we're looking at now. I think he called Plan D. The people who have been living here in this neighborhood, the sidewalk is not solving the issues that they've been describing to us. I just feel like, I just want to say, I hear you. I don't support this at all, and I just don't, I just don't think that you've been heard like you should be with that, because some of the comments just don't match the concerns you've brought forward. I don't, I know we need housing stock, but I think that this rezoning is not bringing the quality that we need. We need affordable and quality, and the price point on these are not considered in the realm of affordable. The traffic pattern, if families were to move into this new subdivision versus student rental, when those buses come through, the school buses, people are going to look to drive out to their work, they're going to see the school bus, and they'll hightail it over and cut through their area, because, yep, there'll be multiple elementary schools, middle school, high school, if families are moving into that area. But I think that the amount of houses that can be in there by right has been expected from this long-term community next to it that have been voicing their displeasure with the process, the changing of the details, and the disruption that they're going to have, and trying to think that this is going to solve our housing stock problem, I think, is a tough thing for them to hear, because it's not going to solve it. But anyway, I'm against it, and I hope that others will listen a little bit to the residents and their concerns.
Any further input before we move to a roll call? Commissioner?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple thoughts and a couple questions. So, you know, first, I think that the remarks from the residents are really important to take seriously. I was there with you all at the Planning Commission meeting, and, you know, obviously here at our agenda setting in today, and I take those seriously. I think you're right to point out that this rezone doesn't get us a binding plan, so those phases we've seen it move through, it could be lots of things that we haven't seen yet. And I think people have also rightly noted that it doesn't guarantee us affordable housing, because there's no provision in here that, you know, mandates that to be a part of it. But I think relevant, though not enough on its own, is that this is giving us some more housing stock, which is needed and has an indirect but positive effect on the shortage of housing stock, which is part of why the cost of housing has risen so much and so quickly. But to me, that wouldn't be enough on its own, because I think it's rightly pointed out that this is also about getting more money in the pockets of the people who are investing. And to me, what's very important about this is that the motion on the floor includes a number of binding conditions that the community would not otherwise be guaranteed, and I think would be very unlikely to get. And so while this is a denser development than we would otherwise have, I think it's also guaranteeing things such as, because these are binding conditions, the wooded buffer, the conserve tree canopy, the second connection to Wood Grove Drive, the cap on the lots. And it's with that in mind, I had a couple just clarifying questions about those conditions. So first, I heard the developer note the sidewalks, and I just wanted to clarify, are those down Wood Grove? I mean, they have to put them in their own construction, but then they're, they suggested also adding them down Wood Grove Drive and along Lexington Road. Is that correct?
If you're asking me, Commissioner, you're going to have to call the applicant back up, because the condition of the sidewalks, this is first I've heard of this.
If the applicant would come to the podium. The question was regarding the placement of the sidewalks.
Placement of the sidewalks. Where exactly are we talking? From where to where, along which roads?
Sure. We're going to have to, of course, put sidewalks in within our development. Our first curb cut to Wood Grove Drive lines up with Woodhurst Street. And so the sidewalk would connect there and then turn towards Highway 78 and connect to the sidewalk there on Highway 78. So essentially, you would have a loop around that portion.
That'd be on the eastern edge of the buffer zone. Is that correct?
That's right. On the west side of Wood Grove Drive.
Okay.
Yep.
And then, was there also something noted about along Lexington Road, beyond what already has to be built?
There will be sidewalks there along Lexington Road, but that was our only point there.
Okay. And so would those connect from Wood Grove over to where you all are building? I think there's like a little bit of a gap there.
Yes, yes. It will be a continuous loop. So you'd be able to walk through our development, turn down Wood Grove Drive, walk all the way down to Highway 78, and then walk down Highway 78 towards Walmart.
Okay. And then the right-in, right-out that you mentioned, is that along the road that you're building, or is that installing a right-in, right-out at Wood Grove Drive?
No, the right-in and right-out will be directly connected to Highway 78.
From which road, though? From the road that you all are constructing?
Yes, yes. From the road that we'll be constructing.
Okay. All right. So then I guess my question for the attorney and/or Brad is...
Set everything for the applicant, Commissioner.
Yes, I believe so.
Okay.
Thank you.
I want to make sure I've got, so I said the additional conditions or the development should be capped, 87 homes. A sidewalk shall be provided along the west side of Wood Grove Drive. Do I need to add, I need to know, do I need to add additional explanation?
That connects to 78 and back over to the road that they're building.
Along the entire frontage of the parcel on Highway 78.
And shall run along the entire frontage of Highway 78? A sidewalk should be provided along the west side of Wood Grove Drive? So we've got to be specific with this language.
Yeah, yeah. And connects, connecting to and along Highway 78, back to the initial road, I guess. I don't know how to finish that sentence.
And what is the name of that initial road?
Probably haven't built yet.
Back to the entrance there, to be constructed, I guess, yeah.
So now, here's what I've got. A sidewalk should be provided along the west side of Wood Grove Drive, connecting to and along Highway 78, back to the proposed development road. In addition, development should be capped ASAP homes.
And then for the right-in, right-out, did you specify where that would be and the inclusion of a deceleration lane?
The right-in, right-out is going to be wherever the public street is placed for the proposed development. GDOT is not going to give them a full access. You've got a median there anyway, so that public street will include a right-in, right-out access point onto Lexington Road, Highway 78. That's the one that's being capped, and that's being put, that's a state restriction that is kind of outside of our purview.
Is the deceleration lane something they'd have to do anyway as well? Or is that something they're adding on top of what GDOT would require?
It's my understanding they were required to do that in order to get approval for the right-in, right-out from GDOT.
Okay. So, so what of that do we need to include in our language?
I don't think you need to, I don't think you need to include any of that.
Okay. And then, the only other thing that I heard mentioned is the lack of attached units, which I think we would need to include. The applicant mentioned a cap of eighty-seven lots and with no attached units. And so, we would have to stipulate as part of our motion, well, if Commissioner Davenport agrees, amending the motion to also specify no attached units, which could otherwise be built by right, is that correct?
I mean, you would, if, if that's something that this commission wants to approve, I would encourage you to add that as another condition, that no attached units. Because you can technically do them. It would be very difficult here to do them because of the distance requirement from East Hampton, but I'm, I can't sit here and tell you that they couldn't without seeing a final plan.
And it, I mean, and I heard you all correctly that you're wanting that, so would you be...
I'm making my original motion to include...
Exclusion of attached units?
Yes, exclusion of attached units.
Commissioner Link is second, or your favorite? Commissioner Hamby?
Sure, Mayor, thank you. I guess I'm just sitting here wondering, you know, should we not be concerned that all of this is happening on the floor like this, or attorneys having to put it together on the floor like this? It doesn't seem real fair to the residents to do something like this. I don't feel good about it.
Commissioner Myers?
Yeah. Well, actually, maybe I'll make a substitute motion, but I, I need to know about that legally as, as well, because we did have, I talked to Commissioner Davenport about this last night, and there was a document that he sent out to us all, but I said it wasn't part of the, you know, what was that? Was that, did that have any legal binding? And it did include these six summary of conditions, but that was not in the, there was no legal binding, and that's why we're adding them in here now. And so, my question, is there a way, it does feel like we're, we're kind of, is there a way to, like, table this for, like, a, for a month?
We can table this for a cycle.
Can we table this? Can I make a motion to table this for a cycle, to get this all out, so that the residents...
I second.
All right. I've got a substitute motion to table for one cycle. A motion from Commissioner Myers, second from Commissioner Thorne.
I don't have any comment.
Any further discussion, Commissioner Thorne?
I don't have any comment.
All right. Any other discussion from the body? All right, we'll do a, do a cycle from Commissioner Myers.
Myers?
Yes.
Thornton?
Yes.
Hamby?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Link?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Denson?
Yes.
Hul?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
None? Yes.
All right. We will see this again in a month. All right. Item twenty-nine is a rezoning of the former cooperative extension office from G Government to CG or Commercial General, as with the adjacent parcels.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. I've got a motion from Commissioner Link. I've got a second from Commissioner Edwards. Any follow-up from Commissioner Link?
Nope.
Any comments, Commissioner Edwards? Anyone else on the body? All in favor, please say aye. Oh, I've got an ordinance.
This is actually an amendment to the future land use plan and a rezoning. This is the, so we have two votes. An ordinance to amend the code of Athens, Clark County, Georgia, with respect to amending the official future land use map of Athens, Clark County, by changing the designation on approximately zero point four, on approximately zero point four-eight acre of land located two-one-five-two West Broad Street, from government to general business and for the purposes. And then, an ordinance to amend the code of Athens, Clark County, Georgia, with respect to rezoning one parcel of land comprising approximately zero point four-eight acre, located two-one-five-two West Broad Street, from G Government to CG Commercial General and for other purposes.
Thank you for that. So we need a first vote on future land use. Commissioner Link, do we get a vote on that?
I move to approve the future land use.
Second.
All right. And I have not called for public input, I apologize. Any public input on this item? All right. All right. So we've got a motion for future land use modification from Commissioner Link, and second from Commissioner Edwards. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We need a second motion for the zoning from G to CG. Do I hear that?
I, I move to change the zoning from G to CG.
All right. I've got a motion from Commissioner Link, and second from Commissioner Edwards. Any follow-up from any member of the body? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. All in favor? So we are now zoning this CG. All right. Now, is that time in the evening when we get public input on any item not on tonight's agenda? Rules of public input at this time are the same as they were earlier, a three-minute opportunity. The light will turn yellow when you begin speak, red, excuse me, green when you begin speaking, yellow in thirty seconds remain, and red when that time has concluded. Is there anyone who would like to speak to any item not on tonight's agenda? Good evening. Let us know your name, and you go ahead and begin.
I'm Philip Tapley. I don't know if I have to do the address anymore, but I'm over there on, on Ree Street. I want to advocate briefly for a proposal by the Economic Justice Coalition Worker Center to use ARPA funds to build out its capacity to deliver economic justice through the center here in Athens. I'm personally a third-year law student, planning to focus on labor and employment issues. I believe in workers' rights as a pillar of a community, centerpiece of an individual's dignity, and I know this body does too, based on your support in the past of things like worker training programs, et cetera. I applaud those efforts. What I hope we can do is go beyond them and address the prevalence in the city of jobs where workers are too easily exploited, both in terms of wage theft, discrimination, unsafe conditions, et cetera. And I believe that step one in doing that is by greatly increasing the knowledge base in the city, people's understandings of the rights they already possess, by the state and by the federal laws. And I believe step two is making sure workers understand where to turn if they are mistreated at work, by building networks, practitioners, community members, be that legal or otherwise, so that if that does occur, workers have recourse. So I hope that the proposal, I hope everyone in the body here has time to take a look at it. I know that everyone involved in the Worker Center is eager to discuss any, any points about it, but I hope it can serve as, as a model of how we can accomplish what I've described here. I believe in the Worker Center model, because it's a flexible one, the bill is self-sufficient workers, and I believe in this particular Worker Center because of who's running it and the organization, organization it's within. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Philip. Anyone else here to speak to any item not on the agenda?
Good evening. Brother Flanagan, two fifteen Gressom Street. I'm also here to speak in favor or to advocate for the proposal by the Economic Justice Coalition to support our Worker Center and build a capacity, like the previous speaker before me. There are several reasons why this work, I think, is very important. I want to try to lay out a couple of those reasons, and then also point out a specific distinction, distinction in how this is different from some of the other programs that already exist in our community. You know, housing affordability is something that we talk about a lot in this community with the increased attention and the lack of affordable housing in our community. Housing affordability, though, is directly related to the amount of income a person makes through wages or business or whatever, retirement. And so, when you think about those things, and the meager wages and low wages that many of our constituents are stuck in these low-wage positions, it is important for them to be able to explore a multitude of ways and to improve their working conditions. And one of that is through labor organizing. And that is something that we help to facilitate, that process. And then also, just thinking about, you know, how, how we can support workers in learning their rights and learning the different ways in which they can self-determine and creating a better labor culture in Athens overall. And I think some of the training programs we already have that exist in this community are great, and they're training people, but they're also not really taking into account that some of the positions people are being trained for are still subjecting them to exploitation or low wages in some cases. I know many employers say they need a skilled workforce, and they use all this different language and rhetoric around our workforce not being ready to step into these roles and jobs. I want to push back on that narrative a little bit, though, because many people are already working for many of these companies. It doesn't really talk about how they are treated by middle management in some cases, how they are talked down to and degraded in a paternal fashion. And really, kind of, if you've been paying attention in the news, you see, like, the different wage theft cases that have been happening in some of the restaurants around town, and lawsuits that have been filed, and lawsuits that have been won on behalf of, or settled on behalf of some of these restaurants that we have in our town. And so, these are some of the things that we want to address through this proposal. And this is distinctly different from some of the work that's already happening, because, as I mentioned earlier, we want to make sure that we explain to workers what their rights are and the leverage they have to organize for better wages, better benefits, to take advantage of workers' comp or any other FMLA, things that they may need when situations arise, and to make sure they're prepared to file claims if they need to do so. We want to be able to help facilitate them with that process and understanding how to navigate it. And so, we hope that you really consider funding this proposal. And if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to us.
Thank you, Brother.
Economic Justice Coalition. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else here to speak to any item not on tonight's agenda? All right. We are going to go around and receive input from key staff members, myself and the commission. Manager Williams, anything this evening?
Yes, sir. Give me one second here. I wanted to point out that there is, in the packet, a seventy-five-hundred-dollar expenditure for an naloxone grant, and that is within the ordinance for the manager to approve. But I did want to point this out to you, because as we know, opioid epidemic is, is very debilitating to not only our community, but obviously the people that are directly impacted in many ways. And so, this, this is a grant that we were awarded, we're still within the grant period, so this is just a approval of this to go ahead and expend those seventy-five-hundred dollars for additional naloxone. And what I would share with you is, year-to-date, our officers have used ninety-six doses of this at a cost of about forty-five-hundred dollars, just under fifty dollars per dose. And it's, it's pretty amazing what impact that can have. This time last year, and this is all from Chief Salters, interim Chief Salters, we had deployed this thirty-seven times. This represents a hundred-and-fifty-nine percent increase in the deployment of this intervention. Unfortunately, this year, we have had forty-three people die from suspected overdoses. So we, we focus a lot on homicides, which rightfully so, but this pales, that pales in comparison to the number of folks that lose their lives to this epidemic. So our officers are now carrying naloxone in their front pockets, so they can have it ready to deploy when needed. And as an agency, Chief Salters tells me that they've reached out to community partners to work towards saving lives through education and awareness as well, a multi-pronged effort. So, a small amount of money, seventy-five-hundred dollars, but it can go a long way. And I wanted to provide you, Commissioner Hul and I were speaking this morning, some additional context as to how important that is. Thank you.
Thank you for that update and the work on, for this community from staff. Appreciate that. Manager Williams, anything, Attorney Drake?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right. I've just a couple of things. I want to call out an Adopt Athens participant who are the River Oaks Neighborhood Association, who have adopted River, Ben Parkway, the median, and the surrounding green space. I want to note a reappointment of Senior Judge David Swett to the Advantage Board. This is my purview. And then, I'm going to appoint, for the remainder of this calendar year, Commissioner Tim Denson as GOC Chair. So that's everything I have. And I'll go ahead and begin with Commissioner Hamby, and we'll go our way back to Commissioner Davenport.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just be, I'll just be real brief, and I, and just, I'd like to actually recognize somebody in my district who unfortunately has, has passed away, but had a, a very huge impact on historic preservation in, in our community and in our state. Without Professor John Waters, we wouldn't have either one of those for our state or for our community. He was very helpful in making sure our, our history is preserved, but also, he was very helpful to me in a lot of ways with his neighborhood, with understanding historic preservation. And, and, and so, he'll be greatly missed by the community and by me. I will say this, that, you know, when John, Professor Waters actually left a note on my house on, on Friday, the twenty-sixth, asking for something, and then passed away on the twenty-ninth, I would like to put in a work order request to, to honor Professor Waters' last request of, of me, and that is to do some traffic study on Millet Circle. On the, that's what the letter was about, y'all. It was a letter, handwritten letter. They left it on my back porch, and, and very nice, and just asking that we do something about the, the speed on Millet Circle. So I'd like to put in a request to do a traffic study on the upper end of Millet Circle, but also on the lower end of, of Millet Circle. And I know our, our traffic guys have their hands full, but, but if we could add that to the list, I certainly appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Thorne?
I, I would like to speak to the Tuscaloosa trip. I think it was very informative, and it was fun, and I did take, I did have some takeaways that I would like to put out or discuss with this commission at some point. But I want to give kudos to Patrick Howard, Neighborhood Leader, and Timothy Brightwell. We had a TPW input session when I went to Tuscaloosa, and Timmy felt that I should be there. But I, I think the best thing we could do is help our, our constituents to be more proactive. I didn't get the details of the, and, and I also want to thank Fowler Drive Elementary, too, because they got the word out about the TP, TPW input session. And this just goes again to, it's a lot of work to encourage and empower our constituents. I keep saying eleven people cannot do this work, and they did it. And I know they did it, because I didn't hear nothing bad when I came back. But that's, that's work, and it's to encourage our constituents. Don't, we don't need to come and, and babysit our constituents. I'm real proud of Patrick Howard, Neighborhood Leader, for the Fowler Drive Zone, Fowler Drive School, and Timmy Brightwell, who is a resident on Monte Drive, for facilitating that TPW input session on traffic calming. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Myers?
Yeah. You know, I haven't mentioned the Tuscalo, Tuscaloosa trip, so I guess this is my opportunity to just say thank you to the Chamber of Commerce and David Bradley and his team for putting that all together. I think we were all exposed to a lot of different ideas that are going on in Tuscaloosa and Birmingham, but the one thing that was emphasized again and again and again was the importance of building relationships and building trust. And the trip enabled some of that to happen, as we worked with people across the leadership realm in Athens, from bank leaders to Clark County School District, people to UGA staff and leaders over there, too. So I'm really appreciative of that. The other thing, too, I just want to mention, and I'm a little remiss on this, is that I was fortunate to participate in the fentanyl crisis, I don't know if we call it, task force startup, with District Attorney Gonzalez, and also the chief, Police Chief, interim Police Chief Salter, who are working together so well in terms of building a relationship to, with, between those two bodies, but also with other providers and other people in the community who are really working on this issue. So I will, I'm remiss in sharing that information, but I will share, get that together and share that with my colleagues, and to let them know what's going on, because this is a big crisis. That's it for tonight.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yeah, I appreciate the remarks about Professor John Waters. He indeed was a Georgia giant whose insight helped craft the historic preservation state law here in Georgia. And from that, historic districts were created all across the state, and he certainly played a role in creating some of those districts here in our town. So just another, another great Athenian whose impact is felt far beyond the borders of this, of this great city. You know, I certainly was troubled to hear about the person walking across Highway 29 who was struck and killed by a motorist. You know, I, I think we, we can't forget about these instances. The one a few months ago, the woman crossing Atlanta Highway. You know, people walking, getting struck and killed by vehicles, being driven in this We've got to do better with our infrastructure that we control, but, you know, Manager Williams and staff, you know, some of these areas are controlled by the Georgia Department of Transportation, too, and I just, you know, the report that y'all prepared, which helped provide some of this insight, pointed out that there wasn't a crosswalk within half a mile of this major intersection, Boyle Road and Highway 29. I mean, there's a lot of development around there. It really frustrates me. We have limited influence here over the infrastructure we control locally, but we have state entities that I feel like they're just not, we're not singing from the same songbook when it comes to recognizing that these roads are not safe. I was driving today along Lumpkin Street. Between Westlake and Five Points, that road's been paved so many times, the sidewalk is at grade with the road. You know, to my knowledge, again, another GDOT issue. I just feel so much of this important work that we do here, folks, is trying to create safe communities for everybody, people who can't drive, you know, children, elderly folks, folks with disabilities. That's why I'm so excited about the discussion we had about transit tonight, of course, the discussion that Manager Williams raised about the fentanyl epidemic that we're dealing with. There's a lot of major issues coming before this county commission always, so let's keep up the good work, guys. Thanks.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thanks, y'all. First, I want to thank the public commenters. I'd like to see us follow through on exploring how we can support this concept of a Worker Center. I think labor needs to be at the table more often in what we do, and echoing my remarks at the retreat we had earlier this month and some conversations on the Tuscaloosa trip, workforce development needs to be, I think, broadened in scope for us, to not just be the things that we hear consistently talked about in terms of education and soft skills and helping people climb the ladder, but also in redefining where the bottom rung of that ladder should be. And, you know, when we think of workforce development, I'm thinking of that as developing better conditions for our existing workforce, specifically in the sectors that we hear taken for granted as paying these poverty wages. And so what can we do to improve those conditions? I think this is a very compelling concept we've heard brought to us for years now, and I hope that it's heavily considered when we look at how to spend the ARPA money, especially from that category of business development and workforce support. That work is part, this concept is part of what we captured as possibilities in the directives that we outlined in the American Rescue Plan Act funding program that we passed on March 1st of this year. I also hope that we will take action sooner than later on the request that our Firefighters Union made of us last month. I know that they're still looking for that to be followed through upon, and I'm very interested in that. A few notes for District 6 residents. First is the Planning Commission meeting last Thursday is definitely one you may want to note, especially if you live on Melwood Drive, Mill Center Boulevard, Jennings Mill Parkway, or perhaps nearby on Arrowhead Road. There is a proposal we'll be considering at our agenda setting and at our next meeting there. And then at 1165 Oglethorpe Avenue, there was the first hearing. There will be another before the Planning Commission, but that's especially of note, I think, for the residents of Forest Heights, Hampton Park, and Breckenridge. So if you're living in those areas, maybe check out that Planning Commission meeting. Also, if you live along Mitchell Bridge or Timothy Road, please go to ACCgov.com/AtlantaHighway. There's less than two weeks left to weigh in on that survey, and we really want your input. It's residents of Westchester, anyone along Atlanta Highway or Talisi who uses those roads. And regarding TPW, you know, I want to celebrate that Fowler Mill Bridge. We had a really great town hall a few months, a few weeks ago, and Fowler Mill Bridge, we've got the agreements in place that we needed with GDOT to partner with them on the bridge replacement and to pursue a locally funded interim repair to that bridge. So this means that the bridge should reopen for residential traffic in spring of 2023, if not sooner. I do have a few follow-up questions for staff that I'll probably be emailing y'all about. One is just the, I got a lot of questions about the plan for that full replacement that we're going to partner with GDOT on and whether the road will have to be closed again for that. And then also, I've had a lot of requests lately for safety upgrades along Talisi Road, so following through on some of those audit recommendations we got, seeing what we can do. And finally, questions regarding the timing of the lights on Atlanta Highway. And then I'll close with just a few calendar announcements. Sorry, I know this is a lot. This Friday, 9/9, we have our next TAD redevelopment committee meeting. I know a lot of people are really interested in what's going to happen at the mall and specifically how that TAD money will be used, so catching up on those videos and watching or attending this meeting is a good way to really catch up on that. That's going to be here at City Hall at 3:00 PM. Doing a District 6 community cleanup at Ben Burton Park this Saturday, September 10th, from 10:00 AM to 11:30 AM. This Sunday, the 25th, this is not in District 6, but Commissioner, this would-be four is not here, so the ribbon cutting for solar panels in Triangle Plaza will be happening at 2:00 PM. On Wednesday, September 28th, I'll be having my next District 6 Town Hall. That'll be at the Cooperative Extension on Cleveland Road from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. We'll be focusing on homelessness, and we're going to have a lot of folks, including folks who joined us in Tuscaloosa and who are doing the good work day in and day out in this community there, to discuss that issue. And finally, I'm looking forward to participating in Porch Fest again, which is coming up on Sunday, the 2nd of October. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Denson?
Commissioner Hill leaves off that I will be playing Porch Fest with them. We're double billed. All right, just three things, and actually I think this is a good honor of Mr. John Waters. On September 27th, I'll be having a town hall discussion on the possibility of a normal town historic district. Had a lot of interest on that expressed over the, for and against over the last, over the summer, so we're going to be holding a discussion to get deeper into that, and more details will be sent out on my newsletter. Also, for broadband being a big issue, especially on, for those of us representing people on the outside of the loop, ACCGov right now is doing a speed test. They actually test how fast your broadband is so we can actually pinpoint where the issues are and where we really need to be building up our infrastructure. So if you go to ACCgov.com/speedtest, you can do it. Ask you some questions, takes your test right there of the speed of your internet, records it, and yeah, it's very, very helpful. And then the last thing I'll say is, I'll just, I'll just be out there, and I think this builds upon some of what Commissioner Edwards was talking about also, about the need of us trying to rethink our infrastructure a little bit. I'd say that one thing that I would really love to see happen while I'm still on this commission here, would be for us to hold at least our first Athens Street Alive downtown. And I would love to be, be able to work with staff to make that happen. I think it's perfect now that Clayton Street is coming up here to an end of being redone, and then once it's done, I think it'd be fantastic if we opened up Clayton Street as a pedestrian festival, like many other cities are doing now, so that we can actually experience our infrastructure downtown in a way that's not car-centric. And I would love to, I think it'll be a huge success, and I wouldn't be surprised if we could be doing it every single Sunday, but that's something I would love to be talking with my colleagues about and staff to actually get happening sooner rather than later. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wright?
Thank you. I think I'm just going to wrap up with another memorial moment. Our community lost a great artist, Art Rosenbaum, passed away, the visual painting, drawing instructor at the Lamar Dodd School of Art, so professor emeritus. And then he also was very instrumental in folk art, performance art, has a Grammy, I believe, and documented a lot of folk art as well, so his little bit of history that he collected and has shared. But anyway, so let's all be thinking about those family members and close friends who are dealing with these loss and our community's loss as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Link?
Yeah, I was going to acknowledge the passing of Art Rosenbaum as well. He had something of an influence on me in my early years in Athens and many of my closest friends, and he's helped start the Athens Folk Festival, which is kicking back up on September 24th. And yeah, he does have a Grammy. He was, he's, in addition to being a renowned artist and musician in his own right, he was a musicologist. He is extremely important as a historian, who recorded and chronicled folk and blues artists throughout the country, actually, and he does have a Grammy for that. And he, he's a huge pillar, not only of this community, but the folk music community in general, and he will certainly be missed.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Devon, what are your comments, and then I'll, and then a motion to adjourn.
Real quickly, I do want to appreciate and thank David Bradley and staff for the Tuscaloosa trip. One thing that I, that I took back from that trip was that we all have to work together with our different entities throughout Athens-Carport County and beyond, so please, 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 let's do that, and stop bashing UGA, because they are a huge partner in Athens-Carport County. But also, which is the fact that they are running circles around Athens right now because they're collaborating, they're working together, they got their S together, so I would love for us to be the forefront and be the leader when it comes to workforce development, working together as a community and building a better Athens. I did owe my concerns, I did owe Commissioner Edwards' worries about the traffic accidents and working with GDOT, also on White Hall Road, just to expand on potential traffic accidents. There's sometimes when we don't cut the grass and you're going around a curve, I know there's a curve off of White Hall Road, when the grass is not cut, it's very hard to see, and we, there are a lot of college students who walk towards the, to the river, so just be mindful, just for our staff to be mindful that there are particular places of interest to make sure that we cut the grass, make sure that we are not creating hazards for our pedestrians. Prince Avenue will be polluted fairly soon. And also, just to pat on all of our backs, ABH, Austin Better Herald, did a piece on our T-Spot projects, accolating our parks and all, on the money. So I highly encourage residents is on to review that article, but to thank my colleagues for the hard work that we have done over the past few years to making sure, you know, our Athens is better for the next generation through our parks and our T-Spot money, and I motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Devonport, a second from Commissioner Link. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, everyone have a great week.